I remember as a, as a young teenager right here in Pearland, Texas, I had a, another cousin who was about eighteen months diagnosed with leukemia and as they traveled here to, to go through treatments. So dare say each one of us have someone in our family. So I'd like to read this proclamation. We don't have anybody that we're presenting it to. We're just wanting to make September just people aware of those around us that are hurting because of childhood cancer. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children. One in two hundred and eighty-five children in the United States will be diagnosed by their twentieth birthday. And whereas forty-six children per day or sixteen thousand seven hundred and ninety children per year are diagnosed with cancer in the U.S., eighty percent of childhood cancer patients are diagnosed late and with metastatic disease. Whereas two-thirds of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions as a result of their treatment toxicity, with one quarter being classified as severe to life-threatening. Whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer and the associated need for increased funding to carry this out. Hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level, including the American Childhood Cancer Organization, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support. Whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently, dedicating their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer, too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. That's the most important thing, finding cures for these horrible diseases. Now therefore, I, Kevin Cole, by the power vested in me as the mayor of the great city of Pearland, Texas, do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-three as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And I bring this to you today and just urge each one of us to pass that along. We are going to do some social media posting to bring the awareness out and let people know. Let's not forget those that are going through these treatments in this time, not just the child, but their whole support group, their family, their, imagine, you know, their, their parents, what's going through it. I won't have a show of hands. There's people in this audience, no doubt. You either yourself went through childhood cancer issues, or you yourself have children that went through it. So it is touching many, many lives in our country. So, so with that, let's just remember September each year as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. With that, we will be getting our council meeting started here in just a minute, right on time at six thirty. Thank you. All right. Welcome, everybody, to the city council regular meeting agenda for September the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P.M. If you'll all please stand, we will be led, our invocation, by Councilmember Carbone, followed by both of our pledges by Mayor Pro Tim Coze. Thank you.
If y'all would bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you again for another day in this great city. Thank you for this rain outside. Be with deliberations tonight. Help us to make decisions that are wise and pleasing to you. Be with all our first responders here in the city and around the world that are protecting our freedoms, and get everybody home safely tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for joining in for both of those two. We'll have a few housekeeping items here in just a second. As we move forward in our agenda, roll call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary, I'll certify. We have a quorum present as all members of the council are present and accounted for tonight. Before we move on, I know we've got storm clouds kind of brewing outside. I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege, have our city manager talk just briefly, since we've got a full house tonight, about drought conditions and the drought stage one and stage two that we've been going through. A lot of people think since we've had some recent rains that we should be out of drought conditions, but water production and other things take precedent over that. So with that, Mr. Epperson, if you could fill everyone in on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council and mayor and, and everyone in attendance tonight. So we are still in stage two drought restrictions, and that, that's where we have mandatory restrictions. The reason being is that when, when we were in the midst of this drought, we were pushing the capacity of our system. We've gone to, when we went to voluntary restrictions, we saw a slight moderation in usage, but it wasn't until we went to mandatory that we saw the, the drop in that, that, that we needed to see to, to ensure the integrity of our system overall. We did have about three inches of rain across town. I guess it's been a week, week and a half. I think everyone probably saw that as soon as that fell, a day or so later, we, you know, the cracks hadn't quite closed the, in the ground and, and that we're still, I was notified today that we went from exceptional drought to extreme drought. That's an improvement, but still, we're, we're in an extreme drought still. So really, the, the rains are welcome, but we want to continue to monitor where we are, production-wise, and where we are in the drought, and, and also the forecast that we're looking at as well. When we continue to see ninety-two-plus temperatures this far into February, we didn't want to pull those restrictions back. Oh, September.
Hopefully, we don't see ninety-two in February.
What did I say? That's how bad it is. It's, it feels like, yeah, September. These, these high temperatures in September, we don't want to prematurely pull back on those restrictions and go back to voluntary, and then see that production creep back up into areas we don't want to see it, and then have to reinstate the mandatory. But we, our team watches those every day, and as soon as we feel like we've kind of broken through the drought and our production, we feel comfortable with our production capacity, we'll pull that back to, to voluntary, and then we'll eventually pull back to, to no longer having restrictions. The good news is with our surface water plant, expected to come online very early next year, and two of our other water wells that have been going through some rehab being back online by the end of this year. Next summer, we'll have about another thirteen-plus million gallons available to us per day, and I would expect in, in a similar drought situation, we would probably, we may go into voluntary, but I don't know, and that, that we would have to, if we saw the same numbers this year, next year, we wouldn't have to go into mandatory with that additional capacity, as long as the rest of the system's intact. So that's the good news. But for now, we'll keep it as the mandatory restrictions and hope to ease those and, and relieve, remove those very soon. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Good chance for the update. You can help spread the word as people wonder, why are we still in drought conditions with the rain coming and those types of things? It's because of what's happening underneath the ground as well. So appreciate that. As we move forward, we're going to have citizens' comments. I know we have several people who have signed up to speak and just general comments. We do have one gentleman that, that has signed up to speak, actually two, that have signed up to speak specifically on an issue, on an item here. I'd like to set some expectations for the members of the audience that are speaking in general comments. Those items are not on our agenda. So by law, we can't dialogue. We can't answer questions and talk and discuss. So as you're finishing up your comments, I've got a couple of staff members that I'll direct you to, to establish contact with, so we can have those conversations and get answers and, and to your questions and those types of things, hopefully over the next week, two weeks, whichever it takes to get those questions. So with that, Mayor Pro Tim, would you present those citizens' comments? Oh, and those that did sign up to speak on a particular agenda item, we will be calling you at that agenda item. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor. So when I call you up, please walk to the podium, state your name and address. Once you've done that, the city will put up a clock on our screen here. It'll have three minutes for you. It'll tick down to let you know kind of where you're at during your discussion. And thank you for coming out. First tonight, we call it Mr. David Lee. Please make your way to the podium and state your name and address. Thank you for coming out.
My name is David Lee. I live at twenty-five oh four Longwood Drive. I've lived at this location since two thousand and six. Since living at this location, I've noticed that I have Dixie Woods, HOA, the entire Dixie Woods that lives behind me. Lovely neighborhood. The residents of Dixie Woods have been slowly filling in their drainage easement. This drainage easement is not just a drainage easement, it's also a pipeline easement. I've notified Dixie Woods with, probably eleven years ago, with certified letters, also notified the previous administration regarding this issue. Nothing was ever addressed on it. I have recently re-engaged with the city about this and contacted the engineering department. Apparently, I think a solution was to have a bond election and vote some, for some money to address the drainage issues that are on Longwood Drive. The response that I got back from, I believe it was Ms. Flowers, just recently, I'd like to point out that one of her, her points, and most of this information, by the way, I've, I've been collecting this for a long time. Most of this information I have presented to city council and to the mayor in the, the packet that you have in front of you. One of those is an email from Ms. Flowers, and I believe it is her second point that says that it's very difficult for the city to go in and investigate a drainage easement after twenty-five years that it's been in place. And personally, I, I think that's an insult. The city routinely issues notifications to residents who have an easement, so that the city can go in and inspect or maintain a particular easement. And this has not been done in this easement in over twenty-five years. I have personally watched people fill it in. And my, my question to the city, and it's a rhetorical question, of course, is what's the point of having a drainage easement? What's the point of having a detention pond if residents are going to be allowed with impunity to fill in a drainage easement? And by the way, this is a drainage easement that I don't believe was ever completely constructed by, by the builders of that, that subdivision. Because on the plac, it actually shows a drainage swale that is not there. I don't think it was ever constructed. No one has been able to find it. I've asked the city engineering to please contact the HOA. I'm not asking for the city to maintain this easement. I'm asking for the city to go in and inspect it and see if this easement still functions as it was originally designed to function twenty-five years ago. Again, we're spending money on, on a bond issue to, to address flooding on Longwood, and that flooding is aggravated by the actions of Dixie Woods. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Lee. Certainly a reasonable request.
All right. Next up is Donald Capps. If you'd make your way to the podium and state your name and address, we have three minutes. Thank you for coming out this evening.
My name is Donald Capps. I live at twenty-seven oh two Longwood Drive. And I've bought this property in nineteen seventy-five, so I've been here a little while. I've, I've been concerned about the drainage that we have, and I've noticed that when we have tremendous rains, especially like in nineteen eighty-four, in nineteen eighty-five, I had decided that I was going to plant some potatoes in my backyard. And I did, and I lost all of them because of the drainage. So there's been two other years that that's happened to me because of that drainage. And so I decided the only way that I could actually have a garden was to move it as far away from the back of my yard to where the easement started. My easement is fifty feet. And the thing that, that David did not mention is that Mayor Reed signed a proclamation in, if you'll give me it just a second. I've got it written down in here. I think it was nineteen ninety-six, in which he proposed a two-thousand-dollar fine for people that were violating the drainage. Well, that was later amended to two hundred dollars a person a day. It could be collected over a period of time. I like my neighbor. I don't want to sue my neighbor. But I talked to a very experienced attorney about this, and she said, Don, the only way that you're going to solve this problem is to get the city to try to do what they said they would do in nineteen ninety-six with the previous, with the mayor before, Mayor Reed. I would hope he would look into it and try to find a solution, because I don't want to sue my neighbor. I like my neighbor. And I think really what brought us here today was the fact that the engineer that went through for the bond issue that went through did not address the problem. He wants to put a drainage in for the street that's going to go in, but that doesn't solve our drainage problem. It, of course, solves a problem for the street. The only way that we could correct the problem without anybody's help from city is by us backfilling our land to make sure that the water goes all the way to the front. And that would cost a lot of money, but it would be for everybody. That's what they would have to do in our entire subdivision. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Capps. Lorenzo, hold your hand up over here. Lorenzo Wingate is our Director of Public Works and Engineering. Both gentlemen, he's going to be available to establish that contact. I think, David, you may have already had his contact information, but we want to make sure that we establish that contact and work through some of these issues, especially if we have, once we move forward on that drainage project per the bond program. So thank you for that. Thank you both gentlemen for coming out tonight. Let's see what we can work on together. All right. With that, I think we have three additional.
Yes, sir. All right. Next up is Andy Rathman. If you'd make your way to the podium and state your name and address, we'll give you three minutes to speak. Thank you for coming out.
Andy Rathman, twenty-eight oh seven Red Oak Lane, as long as my wife permits it. We're, I'm here to speak about a proposed apartment complex. I've written an email to, to every member of city council. I think they're kind of familiar with the detail on this particular project. It's going in on Fight Road, right down the street from our subdivision. I watched two videos of the workshop that you guys had with the developer or, and with the P and Z board mission, and became just kind of infuriated by the whole thing when the developer stated that they had buy-in from, from Dad's Club, they had buy-in from West Oaks, wasn't a problem, that, you know, that we were all for it. Well, I can assure you, I can emphatically, that that is wrong. The developer embellished, the developer deceived the city badly, because I have probably talked to the Dad's Club more than what she had. And they, while their system, their, their position on this is to remain neutral, they are not embracing it. Believe me, they are not embracing it, as well as apparently in Little League. I've talked to that president, too, and they are not embracing this. The traffic's going to be horrible on Fight. It's, it's just, there's more people going to be here. How many people do we have here from West Oaks? So there, let that, let that sink in a little bit. So please, please, when this comes up, I realize it's not on the agenda tonight, but keep in, please keep in mind that we're out here. I'm proud of these folks for, for showing up. Thank you. And we've got some folks from Morenci, the other street, that, or I didn't mean to not recognize you guys, that's going to be affected by this project, too. So just keep in mind, I'm, you know, I, I think the real facts are out there, are going to be out there, and you've just been kind of deceived. So I'm going to give your time back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up will be Chris Hendricks. If you'd make your way to the podium, state your name and address. We'll give you three minutes. Thank you for coming out.
Chris Hendricks. I live at twenty-eight fifteen White Oak Lane. My wife and I, my wife has lived at this particular address for about thirty years now. I'm also here to talk about a Harlington Pearland proposed apartment complex. I'd like to bring to your attention three inconsistencies with the traffic study that they did. The first inconsistency will be when the traffic study was put together. Traffic study was run in twenty twenty-one, May twelfth of twenty twenty-one. Who all knows what was going on in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one? We had a lot of people that were, that were out of work, that didn't work, and people who held their, their children home from school, rightfully so. So I read that Houston's traffic died down in twenty twenty by roughly thirty-three percent for the entire year. Just for March and April, the traffic fell off by fifty-five to sixty percent. Right? Twenty twenty-one was when the study was run. Can you imagine the difference? Obviously, we don't, we don't have that for Fight Road, but let's just say it was twenty percent. So the numbers that are here are embellished by about twenty percent. Second inconsistency. We have four hundred and fifty more houses that were not utilized in this study. So you can take the numbers that are here, let's just say, and you put them in by half, because the other two areas have exits onto five eighteen or onto Harky Road. So let's just say that half those people use Fight Road, which is probably going to be more than that, when you start working on five eighteen, putting in the bicycle lanes. Again, that boosts that number. And the third inconsistency is, where does it talk about the children that go to Barry Miller and also to Carston? You have fourteen hundred students that go to school there, eight hundred at Barry Miller, and six hundred and forty that go to Carston. Those parents have to get their children there as well. I don't see any of that, none of that in the study. I'm asking you guys to please take these inconsistencies into consideration when you're making your decisions. We're not going to be bad neighbors, but at the end of the day, we need to do what's right for the infrastructure that's there. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Anne Marie Nava. If you'd make your way to the podium, state your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes. Thanks for coming out this evening.
Hello, Anne Marie Nava. I live at sixty-five ten West, sorry, Acorn Court, which is in the West Oaks Village. So to the point, our major concern is currently Fight Road is in need of some work. There are lots of potholes. There's a lot of traffic that currently goes through there. My street is immediately coming into West Oaks Villages, and I hear the fire trucks going back and forth. I also witnessed the school bus. Whenever school is let out, the children are trying to get off the bus to go into the West Lake Residential Apartment Complex. People go around the bus in that area, even though we know that is illegal. That is currently an issue as we speak. Another issue is the traffic from the Dad's Club, which has always, if you haven't driven by there, is always very bad. I heard a lot of people on the last meeting speak about, oh, well, you know, it'd be fine with us. It'd be fine with us. Well, you don't live in West Oaks, so of course, it would be fine with you. There's a lot of concern. Also, when my son went to Carston Elementary, there is traffic there. It was quicker for me to walk him to school than it was for me to get in the car pickup line. Another concern is going to be regarding the flooding. If you look at the flood maps, if you go and pour more concrete and build a whole nether apartment complex, what does that do to us in our neighborhood? I'm a local realtor, and I am all for providing multiple housing opportunities for people, but not at the cost of thousands of people who will be negatively impacted by this development. So I really hope that the city council will really look into those things, look into the fact that, again, there is going to be a lot more traffic, and Fight Road desperately needs work. As it stands today, I cannot imagine if we had construction trucks coming through there, and how does that impact us? And like I said, the West Oaks Villages, there's one way in and one way out onto Fight. We have no other way to get in and out of our neighborhood. So it will really cause the major issues and cause some major issues with parents taking their kids to school. So I hope the city council will consider that.
Thank you very much. Was that the last, on general comments?
Yes, it is, Mayor.
Vance, would you raise your hand up over there? So Vance Wiley is our Director of Community Development. Andy, I'm going to put you in contact with Vance. Raise your hand again, Vance. Over here, if, if y'all will establish contact tonight, that way, as we don't, we don't even know if the applicant has started coming forward. So we, we need to know that first. But having said that, establish those lines of communication, so you're well informed if that moves forward. All right. Thank you again, and thank you again for the professionalism of that, and I appreciate your concerns. Well spoken tonight. With that, we're going to, the other citizens' comments are directly tied to an agenda item, so we'll get to those in just a minute. We'll move forward to public hearing number one, public hearing on FY twenty-four proposed city tax, city property tax rate. With that, we'll turn it over to staff for your presentation, and then we'll bring it to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, council. So this is our, tonight, we have the, the last pieces of our budget for FY twenty-four. So we'll walk through the presentation and then be prepared for any questions or any other discussion on the budget. So as we've talked about through our multiple budget meetings, the, the theme of this year's budget is realigning for resilience, and that was chosen specifically for those words, realigning to change to a different position or state, readjust, reorient, and then resilience. The cat, capacity to withstand- The ca, capacity to withstand or recover quickly from difficulties, flexibility, durability, and strength. And that stems from, uh, what we're coming out of from last year's budget when we had the $1.3 billion valuation error. So, in framing this budget, we really started with there, um, ensuring that we could restore the budget, um, the things that were taken out of last year's budget. As we move forward with the FY24 budget. So, last year, because of that valuation error, uh, the tax rate was dropped almost eight cents. And we had an operating deficit of just over se, $7 million. So, with this budget, we're restoring, um, the integrity to the budget, as well as we are, um, with only a one and a half percent increase in the expenditures over the expenditures in FY23. Uh, what we had to absorb as part of this budget was a significant cost and increase for property insurance. We had to mo, restore the $1.6 million in, in motor pool lease payments that we did not, uh, put in the budget last year. It is a structurally balanced budget where our revenues exceed our expenditures. We also looked at many different areas to make sure we were u, utilizing our existing resources for maximum efficiency. So, in the fire department, as well as the parks department, looked at a lot of the part-time positions, converted those to full-time positions. For the same dollar value, but those will give us better service, uh, having those full-time employees in those particular positions. We also, um, because we are a people organization, we looked at our compensation package to make sure we're keeping it competitive. Um, dealing with not only inflation, but the competitive work market out there. And making sure that, uh, we have an attractive package for nu, uh, attracting employees, as well as retaining our existing employees. And then, uh, really where we started and ended was a focus on our strategic priorities and milestones as established by our city council. So, this, uh, we've been through several meetings. We had our first budget discussion back in, on August 12th, and then we had our vote on the proposed maximum tax rate on the 14th. Then we had our budget discussion two and three on August 21st and 28th. At our last meeting, we had our public hearing on the budget, the first reading of the budget ordinance, first reading of the tax rate ordinance. And so, tonight, um, is the final reading of both of those, as well as our public hearing on the tax rate. And that will, uh, conclude our, our budget cycle for this year. So, as part of what we're gonna cover in the presentation tonight, we're gonna give a general overview of the budget assumptions, property taxes, review of the revenues, expenses, as well as the fee changes that are proposed this year. We will, uh, show our tax back, back debt fund, and then our internal service funds and special revenue funds. Uh, component units, which is essentially the Pearland Economic Development Corporation. And then our enterprise fund, which is our water and sewer, uh, enterprise fund, as it operates separate from our general fund, uh, tax back, back budget. It operates only on its, uh, revenues from water and sewer revenues. So, our, uh, the big picture on our budget, like I said, it's a balanced budget. And it, um, it, uh, projects to have, uh, over our minimum fund balance of 25%. So, 90 days is our minimum fund balance. This, this budget, uh, projects that we will end 90, with 92 day of, days of reserve. Touching on the assessed value by county, so this is our, we continue to see, uh, strong growth in our assessed values. So, this is the, the growth we've seen over the last four years, uh, separated out by county. So, that we, uh, have a total value there of just over $17 billion of assessed value. We've got a couple of sample Homestead tax rates over years, and I think that the thing to point out here is that the city's tax rate, which is the green color, fluctuates somewhere between about 25% and 30% of people's tax rate, uh, overall tax rate. So, um, what this shows is both the school district, the city, the county, the county's road and bridge fund, uh, the drainage district, uh, all stacked up together. And you can see from when the, the city's peak rate was, uh, in 2019 at just over 74 cents compared to what's proposed in this budget at 65 and a half cents. And you can see from the overall, uh, tax rate that, uh, peaked just under about $2.69. Uh, with all entities combined, we're looking at probably, likely around $2.23, uh, in 2023. The next one shows the same thing, but adds in a mud district, as we have many, many folks within our, um, within Pearland that also pay mud taxes. So, you can see, um, basically the same as the last one, except the, the overall tax bill, uh, in 2018 was about $3. For all the entities combined, as, uh, compared to $2.45, um, this, this year. So, the, uh, what we saw earlier was the, um, the actual market value or, uh, and then, once you go through all the calculations with the state's calculation worksheet, you arrive at the taxable values, and this is what we actually derive our revenues from. And so, uh, you can see over the years, our taxable values, uh, continue to go up as well. We separate these out by the city. And what is in TERS number two is that is a significant, uh, value within our city, almost $4 billion at this point. And, uh, we separate that out because we do not, uh, realize all of the tax revenue off of the TERS. Um, we get a portion of that back through a, a management fee, uh, through the TERS, but the rest of it goes into the TERS until the TERS concludes in 202030. Um, so, all that, um, with that background, what we've proposed to set the tax rate at for fiscal year 24 is our maintenance and operations rate at, uh, just over 32 cents, and our debt rate at just over 33 cents for a combined tax rate of 65.54. And then, um, this just is a compilation showing, uh, last year's, uh, revenues based on the tax rate, and then the proposed tax rate this year. And then, um, what revenue would be generated if we were at the no new revenue rate or the voter approved rate. So, what's proposed there is to generate about $40 million off the general fund, uh, property tax. And then, there will be about another $15.7 million from the TERS admin fee, um, that, that is our, basically our property taxes that's going into our general fund. So, with that, I'm gonna hand it over to our budget officer, um, Rachel Winslow, and she's gonna cover, um, all the other, uh, rev, or all the, the revenues in the general fund, as well as expenditures, and then all the other funds.
Thank you, Mr. Epperson. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So, the general fund revenues for fiscal year 2024 are proposed at 115.2 million, which is a 9% increase over our fiscal year 23 amended revenues. General fund expenditures for fiscal year 24 are set at 114 million, which is a 1% increase over the FY23 amended budget. Transfers out for the general fund in 2024 include an 8.94 million dollar transfer for our water used risk management facilities, our drainage maintenance fund, and infrastructure reinvestment fund. The transfer out to the risk management fund increased from 1.1 million in fiscal year 23 to 2.3 million in fiscal year 24. An increase of 1.2 million largely needed due to the rising premium costs for insurance such as windstorm. Motor pool transporters also reflected on here include lease fees. It is estimated that the, at, by the end of fiscal year 24, 42% of city vehicles will be covered by lease fees. General fund expenditures. The city of Pearland is a people organization, and general fund expenditures are primarily related to salaries and wages. Public safety is one of the city's top priorities and is FTE intensive, and is therefore a major source of expenditures at 60% of the budget. All included supplementals are tied to strategic priorities and council milestones. Public safety supplementals included in the FY24 budget include three firefighter positions, a police sergeant with a vehicle, two police officers with vehicles, year one of five for the police radio replacement, the public safety dispatching study, and the all hazards incident management course. Sustainable infrastructure supplementals include the business process review and update for our CIP. UDC updates for community development, and a 311 call center communication study.
Rachel, can I just, uh, real quickly, since we have so many people here, when we get to acronyms, can you just say what the actual thing is? Like UDC and CIP, just for, the, so everyone here understands what we're saying?
Certainly.
Thank you so much.
Our, uh, capital improvement plan. We'll have a consultant to review that process this year, and our unified development code, uh, will be updated. And then, our 311 call center, uh, will undergo a study. Our whole community will be, uh, transitioning a number of part-time staff to full-time positions at a net cost of $0. And we'll also be funding a parks maintenance crew that is offset by a reduction in a parks landscaping contract. Fee changes for FY24 include solid waste and recycling services, reflected through Frontier, as well as a 14% rate increase for our water and wastewater services, and three additional fees for the fire marshal offices, such as child daycare facility inspection, combustible high pile storage inspection, and commercial cooking inspection. Our tax-backed debt fund, the fiscal year 24 proposed debt service rate is 33 cents, is estimated levy of 34.9 million. And our total tax revenue, including frozen values, is estimated at 41.9 million for fiscal year 24. All expenditures in this fund will pay for non-enterprise system or water sewer debt and mud rebates. And the primary driver of our tax-backed debt payments are from capital improvement program projects. This shows our debt service fund income statement, which reflects, uh, that revenues are higher than expenditures, and we will meet our 10% fund policy minimum. This shows our debt, uh, by type from the past and going forward, and we can see that the, uh, largest factor of the debt growth over the next few years is our voter-approved bond election. The debt-to-assess-value ratio reflects the city's ability to repay, that the city's ability to repay debt continues to improve, even as additional debt is added from the voter-approved bond elections. And the amount of debt we have is supportable by the assessed value and de, and is also decreasing. Um, please remember, when we get to our property tax item, that there is specific language that is required to be used, and it is written out in the agenda item. The city has six internal service funds, shown here, including our risk management fund, our medical self-insurance fund, motor pool facilities, information technology fund, and new in fiscal year 24 is our capital fund, which is holding all of the lease fees for the motor pool facilities and information technology fund. Supplementals included in the internal service fund include the replacement of general fund vehicles, approximately $500,000. The replacement of enterprise fund vehicles at approximately 1.07 million. Three fire-heavy apparatus replacements, uh, 4.5 million. Phase-two generator heater enclosures and IT switches for the IT technology fund. The city has a variety of special revenue funds that are all listed here, including their beginning balance, proposed revenues, expenditures, and ending fund balance. And the supplementals included in the, uh, special revenue funds include a transfer from the Convention and Visitors Bureau of 586,000 to capital improvement funds to build additional restrooms at Centennial Park, and a stormwater inspector included in the drainage maintenance fund. The Pearland Economic Development Corporation is a component unit of the city. Uh, this reflects their spending plan for the next fiscal year, and it includes an increase of $1.6 million reflected in the transfers out for the Hickory Sluice Sports Flex. The city's enterprise fund or water and operations funds, uh, containing operations and debt fund combined, the expenditures anticipated for fiscal year 24 for both funds is 81.4 million. The fiscal year 24 revenue changes, uh, are proposed at a 14% rate increase. An average household in Pearland, using approximately 6,000 gallons of water per month, will pay an additional $12.40 more per month. Uh, rate increases are necessary in order to meet our, uh, bond coverage ratio of 1.15, and our operating fund balance, uh, minimum of 15%. This slide shows the history of rate increases in Pearland. Um, this year's fiscal year 24 proposed rate increase is 14%, which is down from the original 16% that was proposed during last year's budget process or forecasted. This slide shows a comparison bill of different, uh, municipalities in the area, and what their water bill looks like compared to the city of Pearland when using a 5/8 inch meter and 6,000 gallons of water. And the next slide reflects the same thing for an average fast food restaurant, uh, using 59,000 gallons of water. The rate increases in the enterprise fund are being driven primarily by our, uh, capital improvement plan. So, um, that includes the proposed budget of 72.4 million for the enterprise operating fund, which is a $5.9 million increase from the fiscal year 23 adopted budget. And the fiscal year 24's operating budget transfer to debt service is a $2.2 million increase from the fiscal year 23 adopted budget. Capital improvement plan projects that are impacting the rate include the surface water plant, Berry Rose, Longwood, and J Heck. Pearland is required to maintain a bond coverage ratio of 1.15, and it is calculating using the formula shown below. Uh, this year, we are meeting that for, ratio at 1.16%. And the next slide shows the enterprise fund rate model, which includes the fiscal year 24 budget, uh, operating and revenues, as well as forecasts for the future years. Utility supplementals included in the FY24 budget include a management assistant, a business administrator, as well as an environmental health and safety coordinator for the utilities administration division, as well as a Pearland water asset management consultant, also in the utilities administration. This is the final, uh, budget meeting for fiscal year 24, and so I will turn it back over to Mr. Epperson and council.
So, we got it down to 50 slides this time. Um, if we'd had a bit, and we know, knew we'd have a big audience, we could have pulled out the 150-slide, uh, deck. But, uh, uh, this is the fifth time we've, we've worked our way through this, so we, we got it down to the essentials tonight. And, um, you know, uh, so tonight, we've got, uh, the three actions, or the, the tax rate public hearing, and then, uh, the second reading of our budget, and then the second reading of our tax rate. And, uh, we've got the, the special language that have to be read on, uh, the, the tax rate, and then, uh, the, the budget takes that secondary action as well. So, um, with that, uh, we're ready to answer any questions and, uh, ready to move forward with the budget. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Since we're still in the public hearing, uh, we'll open it up to the public. Uh, anyone wishing to speak or address, uh, concerns or comments on the budget can go to the podium, give me your name and address, uh, for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Second attempt, those wishing to, uh, address council on this year's proposed, uh, budget can go to the podium. Or in final time, those wishing to, uh, speak and address on this year's budget can go to the podium and give us your thoughts. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we'll move it to, um, questions and answers for, uh, the council to, uh, to address this year's budget in this public hearing. Remember, Kamekar?
Thank you, sir. Uh, can we go to slide 14, I think, in the presentation? Great. Uh, first of all, I wanna thank the, uh, the staff. They've done a tremendous job. Uh, it's not been an easy, uh, road to hoe. The, uh, the issues with the budget last year were not fun, and so I give, uh, kudos to the team, uh, for working really hard on that. I know a lot of people, uh, had to put a lot of inputs and help back a lot of requests to make that happen, so. Try, I just wanna really quickly understand where we're at. So, um, no new revenue rate, is this .55 number here in the black? It's kind of in the middle. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, we're currently at the .62, which is the item in the blue?
Correct.
All right. And then, we're trying to go to the item in the green, which is a proposed rate of .655?
Correct.
So, we're roughly about a little bit more than a dime above the no new revenue rate? Roughly speaking?
That, that's the math, yes.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Remember, Cade?
I saw that the finance department got an award for the budget, and I just wanted to congratulate, um, them for that. I know after last year, it was hard, and... I know after last year, it was hard, and the fact that they got an award is, I think...
Commendable.
Yes, commendable, and shows how hard they worked, and I want to congratulate them for that.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say to staff and Trent that I, the comments I made last time, that I think we have an opportunity here to really make a bigger impact, especially with the tax relief that people are going to be seeing on the ISD side of things. And the fact you're able to put together a budget and address a lot of the needs that have been outstanding for a long time, get us kind of back in a good shape. I'm appreciative of that, of all the work that everybody's done, and so I think that this is moving in the right direction. Again, I think there's probably more opportunity there, but I know it's a balance, and the conversations that we've had, both up here on the dais and off the dais, I know that y'all have put a lot of hard work and effort into making sure that this is addressing the needs and wants of all the things that people ask us to do. And while also thinking long-term into the future, I know that nobody likes to see their tax dollars just kind of get set aside, but there are things that need to be addressed well into the future that may not necessarily be visible today, but we know that they're coming. And so with a lot of the internal service funds and stuff that we're starting to, you know, put money towards future expenditures, I'm very thankful for that, and I think it's going to put us in a good, long-term position. So just wanted to give my thanks to counsel up here for, you know, guiding these discussions, and to staff for delivering what I think is a very good budget this year. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing, move to new business item number one. Mr. Carbone, would you present that item, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, second reading of ordinance number 1631, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Really no need for staff comments, we just...
Just the second reading of the budgets, and we went through the presentation, so no additional comments, Mayor.
With that, any last comments? Remember Kamkar?
Yes, sir. The supplemental item towards the end of that agenda item. Wait, are we still in the public hearing? We're not in the public hearing anymore, we're actually in the reading. Yeah. Great. Member Patel and I enjoyed bantering, I guess, two weeks on this proposal. I won't really belabor the point. Essentially, I'm asking that we cut $2 million from the budget of 114 million. I'm wondering, can the city live with 112? I don't think it's going to go anywhere, I'll bring it up, just like to be able to put the motion out there, but I'd like to go to the next slide. We may need to look that, there we go. So, long story short, this is presented, I guess, from our last meeting, Trent, if I remember correctly, and the slide is in this deck. But this is the presentation essentially with a homestead valuation, along with the homestead value of $379,000. Some people are going to obviously have a home, a higher number, 379, some people will be below, so this is not completely apples to apples, but we need to kind of put something there. Essentially, the area in the orange is the city of Pearland's part of your property taxes that you'll pay on January 1. You might pay it on PITI, you might cut a check, but this is just an example. And going from 2022 to 2023 is a projected increase on this example of $327, which is roughly 15.6% year over year. So I do appreciate that, or expenditure-wise, we're only 1% plus or minus over, but this is the part where the people pay the money. And, you know, it's significant, it's a double-digit increase, it is real money. Now, does it go to worthy items like public safety, parks, rec, staff? Absolutely, nobody would deny that, but this is the actual cost of government. And so I'm just, oh, we're not going to support this, I think that number is just much higher. I don't know many people whose wages went up 15.6% to match this. So I just want to put that out there, this is just based on the city's data, this isn't Alex Kamkar's data, this is simple math. I'll go to the last item here, and we'll flip this one. We've had this in the last couple of agenda items. The, in relation to what has happened post-COVID, post-inflation run-up, we've talked about homestead exemptions, a lot of cities across the state of Texas have really moved to try to provide meaningful tax relief. You have cities like Carrollton, cities like Waco, KD expanded their homestead exemption. The city of Alvin, right down the road from us, moved from, I want to say it was like 2% to the 20% that you see here under 22-14. That is meaningful, that city is growing, that city needs revenue, that city needs to pay for police, fire, and all the other resources, very similar to what we do here in the city. We need to do the same, this budget doesn't contemplate any part of production, homestead exemption, or increase, sorry. It's important, I appreciate Trent, Trent, as part of these discussions, when the budget told us that we would have an agenda item at the second meeting in October to discuss this, again, of how we could provide meaningful tax relief. I am looking forward to that discussion, I just line this out there, that when we can raise the cost of government to you guys 15%, there are other cities that have needs and wants, trying to do something to help, I think it's important. So that's all I have, Mayor, I'm not going to labor that, I'll, you want me to make the motion now, or do we want to go around the horn?
We can go around the horn.
Said before, I think Alvin is a poor example, because after they did that with the homestead exemption, they promptly increased their tax rate higher than ours, and they don't have fire. They...
They do have fires, volunteers.
Well, okay, thank you, Joseph Kosa. They do have fires, it's volunteers. So our fire, we have a paid fire department, which is a big part of our tax burden, and Alvin's is volunteer, so the fact that they, their, sorry, I can't think straight, their tax, their tax rate being that high is a direct result, I would think, of their, of them doing that to their homestead exemption. So I would hesitate to use Alvin as an example, and this being our last reading of the budget tonight, trying to change things now seems a little bit late. And putting this forward, our first reading would have been a better time for us to have been able to look at this and for staff to have been able to do something with it.
Okay.
Yes, I'm fine, thank you.
Surgery last week, so you reached up and grabbed your shoulder, wanted to make sure you were okay. Any other questions, comments offered up? I will say, on the homestead exemption, and it is a worthy discussion to have, I think it, and it, for those in the public, we have, if we're going to change the homestead tax exemption, it has to be done by the month of June, because it has to go to the appraisal district for obvious reasons, as tax payments and bills and those types of things start getting generated here in the next month or so, it's got to be in. So it can't be passed past, it can't be approved and put into place past June 30th, or something like that, there's a date certain in June that it has to be done. So this is actually something that we've talked about for a couple of years, and I asked counsel to bring it forward to the strategic planning workshop that we have every February, so we can have this discussion early in the year, so we don't run up to June and a deadline passed. But no member of counsel put it forward in the timeframe to be able to do something this year. It's the reason why we're committed to having that conversation in October. So I just want to remind people, it's been out there, and we've talked about it, and I've asked council members, if you want to talk about it, bring it in the right timeframe in order to do. Comparing us, comparing cities, I want to caution that, because every city is different, completely different. Their tax base is different, some have more industrial, some have less, some have more retail, some have less, and so that mix makes up everything about it. Where in Pearland, we, in this particular budget, in my view, there is a cost of government. And believe it or not, I've actually had people who are so far on an extreme right that they want to defund police. They do. I've actually had people in this city state, we should cut our police department in half, we should cut our fire completely out and have nothing but EMS. That's why you have insurance, house burns, that's why you have insurance. I've actually had people tell me that, and I can't fathom that in a public safety world to be able to do that. As mentioned, 60% of our budget is public safety. If you add Public Works to that, it's probably 70%, 70, 72% of our budget, those three major departments. So, so I just, I want to caution people, when we start comparing ourselves to other cities because of various reasons, one of those is a paid, fully functional, professional fire department that many cities in the area just simply don't have. Doesn't mean that they have bad people or bad services, they just don't have that. They may have EMS, but they don't have the full, the full thing. And if you were to take and have nothing but volunteers here, as well as EMS, you would probably see a 20% or 25% reduction in your tax rate. That's probably what it costs, have to run the math, but that's probably what it costs. So I want to caution people, comparing us to other cities on tax rates and those types of things. Last call for questions, I know you have an amendment to offer, okay? Remember Hernandez?
Yeah, I wanted to use that same slide, the overall year, year by year, just one other point of clarification that I've brought up a couple of times throughout the years, that when you look at that total, and we look at the, no, the one with all of the, wait, is this the right one? Yeah, the next one, with the number, the total taxes. Yeah. You can use a supplement if you want. There you go, that one. Okay, so the point there that stands out to me, yes, there is an increase in the orange part, the overall tax burden is going down, there was relief, or there will be relief on the ISD side, but when I talk to people, Mayor, oftentimes, you know, I ask them specifically, you know, what is the most visible impactful part of, I guess, local government, and I mean, they often cite, you know, the police and the fire and the roads and all the things that impact their actual daily lives. Some people have kids, some people don't have kids, ISDs are fantastic, because they're, you know, equipping our future generations to be our, you know, next generation of leaders and producers, and all the different things that we need to make a society run, but they are a huge chunk of the tax bill that you get. I mean, you also got county on there, you see we've got road and bridges, all of these different entities that feed into the total amount. So I think, you know, trying not to lose sight of the fact that your city taxes are somewhere usually, Trent, well, 25% roughly of your total, 25% to 30% of your total, but really, as far as the visible day-to-day services that are helping you get from point A to point B, and really helping you live your life and make sure you're safe and sound and secure, and can visit, you know, beautiful parks and ride your bicycle up and down the road, or walk on sidewalks that aren't falling apart, I guess if you don't fund them, they fall apart, but, you know, that's important, that, you know, we keep that in perspective of, yeah, I think, and as I said last time, and maybe it's probably not so good politically to say it, you know, but I think there's an opportunity for the city to play catch-up for all the years that we have been kind of putting things aside, because we do tend to, as taxpayers, I mean, because we're all taxpayers up here as well, look at the total and forget that each one of the entities is different and has different responsibilities. And I certainly, over my, you know, five and a half years up here, have gained a completely different perspective of what the individual entities do, and like I said, I think that, you know, we're probably still running lean, we've got things that I think we could be doing, should be doing, based on all of the, you know, communication we get from the public, whether it's just out at events or by email, things like that, I mean, there's no shortage of needs, that's for sure. So I think, I just didn't want to lose sight of that. Not saying that, you know, there is not going to be an increase, that I think is evident, but in this case, I actually think that the increase here is going to be maybe less burdensome overall, and trying to keep that in sight, rather in perspective, because you can see that, again, looking at the total, that's all I've got, Mayor, thank you.
You want to offer your amendment?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the general fund down to $2 million via the transfers, reduction in transfers. So moved.
Seeing no second, fails for the lack of a second. Last call for comments. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potemcozo?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
Mayor, I believe we also have to do that separate ratification, we got that, thank you.
So we'll turn around, as part of the law, there's a separate ratification on this as well, it was already in the motion, so no need for an additional motion or second. Madam Secretary, we'll call for that vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potemcozo?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
All right, with that, we'll move to item number two. Mr. Kamkar, would you place number two on the table? There is specific language, Josh, can you show that language up that we have to have in there? It's in the, it's in the AR, you have the AR up? There it is.
Lawrence, can you help me out with that, read the required motion, I can be, so moved.
Consideration and possible action, second reading of ordinance, oops, off my screen, ordinance number 1630, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.6554, which is effectively an 18.8% increase in the tax rate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other additional staff report on that?
No, sir.
No, son? So with that, we'll offer up for questions, comments, remember Kamkar? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were looking for the floor. Last opportunity for comments, seeing none?
Sorry, Mayor, I just wanted the public to know, it's not really an 18%, the way they calculate it is very different. Do you mind explaining to the public why they're saying 18%?
So what that looks at is the effective tax rate on the, I believe, the O&M side versus the, versus the tax rate that we're adopting, and so after you go through the state mandated tax rate worksheets, you wind up with the no-new revenue rate, which would actually bring in less revenue to the general fund operating budget than last year's budget. And so once you go through that tax rate worksheet, then you have to go through the additional portions of the law for adopting your tax rate, and the way they make you calculate that is, it winds up, that's the number, it's dealing with the effective tax rate, you know, not necessarily, necessarily, it's not the tax rate this year versus last year, it has to do with the effective tax rate calculated by the tax, the state's tax rate worksheet.
Thank you, sir.
Last call for questions, comments. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Make that motion.
Got to be quicker than that, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to reduce the O&M tax rate by one and a half pennies. So moved.
Seeing no second, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote on the original motion.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potemcozo?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
With that, Mayor Potem, would you present item number three, please?
Yes, Mayor, consideration and possible action, second reading of ordinance number 1358-26, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, so these... So these are the non-development fee changes as part of this budget cycle. And we touch base on those within the presentation. They include the contractually, contractually required increase to our solid waste, our garbage collection fees. We have a contract with Frontier Waste, it is subject to an escalator that's based on the Consumer Price Index. And so that, it's that increase. It also includes the increase on the water and sewer funds as were discussed during the presentation. And then three new fire inspection fees that we previously had not charged for, their state required inspections. And so it's just putting the cost of those inspections on those actual businesses that require to have those inspections versus putting that on everyone else. With that, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you for that. Open it up, questions, comments, concerns from council? Member Kamkar?
Mr. President, what is the number again on the water rate increase for this year that we're voting on? Fourteen percent. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Potemcoza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
With that, we'll move to consent agenda, items A through M, did we have any to be removed?
Mayor, item E and item M, please.
E and M, okay. So if you would, Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Hernandez, if you would present consent agenda items A through M with the exception of E and M.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I move that we approve consent agenda items A through M with the exceptions of Echo and Marine, second.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potemcoza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Those, Mr. Cade, if you would present new business item number four.
Consideration and possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number two thousand M dash, two, five, two, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, staff report. We have a couple of-
Martin, are you handling this one? Years.
Sure thing. So this is the, the second reading for the zone change for twenty-five, ten Roy Road. Council previously saw this discussion and had a five to two vote on it for approval of that zone change. We have not heard any additional comments since then, so we're just bringing it back for the final consideration.
All right, we have, we do have one citizen to speak.
Yes, yes, Mayor, Dr. Schuffler, if you'd make your way to the podium, state your name and address and we'll give you three minutes to speak. Thank you for coming out this evening.
Chris Schuffler, two, one, two, six, Roy Road, Pearland, Texas, seven, seven, five, eight, one. And I didn't see him on the way in. If I can get a punch card for my frequent appearances here lately, that'd be great. I, I wanted to comment, so I did just hear that there were no additional comments, but I did lodge an official comment with the city on this. And I don't know if that got reported to y'all or not, but I just wanted to bring that up, that I did call and talk to somebody last week about this. So I live on the road in question, I grew up on that road, I actually live in the house I grew up in. When I was a kid, I told my mom I was going to build a house in the backyard, and guess what I've been trying to do? Trying to build a house in the backyard, that's a different topic, we'll be here a different day for that. But anyway, the, the thing in question, my understanding is that this zone change is required, is a request to go from residential to general commercial. And I have a few concerns about that. The first concern is Roy Road is not a commercial road. It is an old county road that has never been upgraded, never been repaired, other than patch jobs and stuff. I would argue it's probably one of the weakest roads in the entire city, Garden, Max, Roy, that whole area. And part of the reason is because it is low-density residential. I mean, the properties out there are five and ten acres, you know, maybe two, some, a couple of pocket neighborhoods. But I don't think the road, it's got very deep ditches, I think it's rather dangerous to consider putting school traffic on that road. And I don't think you're going to give them entrance and access off of five, eighteen. Changing the zone also, I don't see how that benefits the city of Pearland. It'll be a tax-exempt use. If that's houses, those people pay taxes. If that's commercial property, those people pay taxes. But a public school that's a charter school going in is going to be tax exempt, and that does not bring us a benefit. You currently have a fantastic school option in Pearland. You know, I do need to say that I'm here in my personal capacity, I'm not in any official capacity. But Pearland ISD is always A-rated, you know, it's fantastic schools, some of the best in the state, and a very good value. The schools in question, you know, I don't want to knock anybody, but I would encourage people to go to greatschools.org and look at their rating. Currently, they're two point eight out of five. So we bring a great product in Pearland, or we bring something that's going to help benefit students. You know, again, I don't want to knock any, one school in particular, it might be a fantastic school, but there's some questions there and there's no transparency like you get in a public school. Lastly, you do have a great school district here, but any student that goes to that charter school will be taking resources out of the public schools. The money follows the child. And when they go to a charter school, they're not answering to the school board that you elect, and that's accountable to you. And they're not answering to FOIA requests, and they're not answering to, you know, what's your budget or anything like that. They have some really pretty buildings. And those buildings cost money, and that's money that's not going into a teacher's pocket to educate a kid. So I just, I don't see the benefit to Pearland of changing this. You know, if they want to bring it to Pearland and we have a spot where it's already zoned, maybe that makes sense if they can get the property and, and it makes, if it meets their pro forma. But us bending or breaking the rules or changing the rules to entice them to move onto that property, I guess I stand against that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd, for that. Any other questions, comments? Any questions, comments from council?
So it is my understanding that in the new updated zone change, we're actually going to propose this area to be a GB, correct? So whether we get it approved here today or in the future, it's going to happen.
I would not phrase it that, that way. So the future land use plan that is coming up in the Pearland twenty forty comprehensive plan, which is coming up in the next couple of months, will take this to a business place type, so a commercial place type. The current future land use plan has this as a commercial area. So that would be the general commercial zoning district that they are requesting is in conformance with the current future land use plan and would be in conformance with the future comprehensive plan.
So we, we wouldn't necessarily proactively change the zone itself, it's just the future land use plan, which we use as a guidance when we make recommendations on requested zone changes, is currently commercial and will go to this news designation, which is, what's it called again?
You had it correct, it was a, a business classification.
Business classification, so it stays basically the same.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if you recall, I was opposed to, to this, this actual zone change. And the reason is, is because the, if you recall, the person or the entity building this, this building didn't want to be bothered with efforts that they would have to go through to create a cup for this particular item. This actual property is, you know, two sections off of any main road other than adjoining Roy Road. And Roy Road is definitely a, an older road, has larger, deeper ditches. Could cause a little bit, you know, the, the higher traffic is going to force us into a situation where we're going to have to pay particular attention to Roy Road versus other, other roads in the district, in, in the city. So not that it wasn't on our radar already, but it's going to kind of push that issue because we're going to have traffic issues associated with that. The second thing is, is I was just, you know, Dr. Schuffler did mention the fact that, you know, charter schools are taking money away from our, our actual education system, Pearland ISD. And I too was opposed to that, actually, in two legislative sessions ago in SB three. So it is what it is, that card has left the barn, but here we are. I would say that Pearland ISD is a good option as well. So that being said, that's just a philosophical difference I have. But for the reasons I stated earlier, would be why I'm still opposed to it.
Any other questions, comments?
Just really quickly, can we refresh, Martin, who is the applicant again? On this zone change?
This is a request by Jack Duran of LDD Blue Lion, applicant on behalf of Harmony Public Schools owner.
Great, and what was their vote coming out of the P and Z?
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a six to zero vote.
There was nobody for or against, it just moved on? From the public, there was no public?
I, no, I do not recall any.
I just wanted that detail, thank you.
Questions, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I know I voted for this first round, I appreciate Dr. Schuffler showing up and actually registering some public comments. And I know, Lawrence, you, you dove into this last time in terms of how the legislature treats charter schools. And I guess to dovetail into Dr. Schuffler's comments, if they wanted to play by the FOIA or Freedom Information Requests and the disclosures, then there's potential that we couldn't stop this zone change. So I, I guess I'd see this as a, a no vote. Could at least bring some transparency to what's going on with that in terms of another educational facility coming into Pearland.
I'm assuming you're looking for an answer on that? And I, I would say that you can stop the zone change. You can tonight, if city council were so inclined, not go forward with the zone change. However, it would be difficult for you to stop the location of a charter school as long as the charter school is compliant with the new state law from locating here. So it could still locate in a zone other than the GC. So that is, the, the zone change, you have control over. You don't have control over the ultimate land use as long as it is a charter school that complies with the new state law. To date, I have not seen anything that says that this charter school has filled out those appropriate disclosures and that they would by right be able to operate there and take advantage of the new state law. But that's not to say they couldn't file that, that's not to say they didn't file it yesterday, and I'm just not aware. And that's not to say that they couldn't address that issue tomorrow. So i- if the council were so inclined, you could postpone this until you work out the access issues or until they work out the access issues. Or you can allow them to move forward with the CUP process if you are so inclined. That might attach conditions that would be appropriate to address those traffic concerns. But ultimately, the school, if it complies with the state law, is going to have the right to be there.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification. For that reason, I'll be voting no tonight.
Any other questions, comments? Remember Hernandez?
Mayor, yeah, on this, being a zone change, we're just voting on the, the zoning. Correct, yeah, so, I mean, that's how I see this, I'm looking at this from really zoning, not, you know, the applicant, you know, the future applicant intended use, things like that. And if this conforms with future land use, I'll be voting for it again. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. You know, I would remind council, it is not our responsibility to educate the kids. This is not a matter of school, whether you agree with them or not. This is a matter of zone change, and that's what we control. I understand that you may not agree with charter schools, but there are parents who want them in our community. That's where they're coming. And whether they put it here or under their lot, the idea is, this is probably the best location. I agree that the road may need to be developed. Let's be honest, not much is coming behind Food Town. And so this is a great use for that. And I understand that the tax base may not be there today. No one's building residence in that community, so it's probably, if I'm not mistaken, exempt anyway. So let's not get into whether you agree with charter schools, let's just have a discussion about the zone, whether it's a best fit.
A quick question, Martin, how many years ago was this zone from GC or GB to R one? Wasn't it about five years ago?
Correct, Mayor, I think that was in twenty eighteen.
Five years ago, five years ago, this was a GC and nothing had located there. I think somebody wanted to do a residential subdivision, couldn't work the drainage out, as I understand. And it does have challenges with drainage in that particular area, but, so this has been GC before, just putting it back as GC, just put that on the table. So I, my, my issues with this site, and it's, we're zoning the dirt. Ultimately, we're zoning the dirt. My issues are the access issues, you know, back out to Reed Boulevard and making sure that that has been worked out or gets worked out. And because doing the one entrance on Roy just is, is going to be a nightmare. So, and I'd like to see that happen at some point in time, you know, before they move forward. So just my two cents on it. Mayor Potem?
Yes, Lawrence, so let me understand this. So what you're saying basically is that they can come back with whatever paperwork or whatever filings that they have and automatically, whether this is R one, GC, whatever it may be, and roll with their school? Is that what I heard earlier?
Yes, sir, there still may be things, even if it happens, that the city can't address. So if they fill out that appropriate paperwork, then this charter school would be able to operate the same way that a school district is able to operate, and they can locate in any zone that the city has. However, there are some restrictions on that according to state law. An example would be if it was right next to an industrial plant that would present hazard to the kid, you know? So you wouldn't normally put it, schools wouldn't normally put, whether it be a charter school or an ISD, next to a M one or M two type facility. If, and if we could show that that's a hazard, we could say, we're not going to approve your building plans.
Okay, and so-
Another issue that can be, and this is the other example, would be if there's a public safety concern. And in this particular instance, the public safety concern that's been identified is in relation to the traffic at that intersection and the amount of traffic on that road and needing a second access, I think, secondary access for fire code provisions. So-
So would that, as far as if that issue pops up, would that be handled once it goes through permitting as far as what their second access is? Because, I mean, they, they own the property just south of it. And I'm assuming that they're just trying to get it under one zone so that they can go ahead with their school because they own the two lots that are south of it that have access to Broadway as well as frontage all the way, you know, down Roy Road on that east side.
I don't know that all of it will be handled during the permitting process, but if this zone change were to go forward, the access issue will have to be addressed during the building permit process.
So somewhere-
So we will not, the, the city will not approve the plans until they see that the safety concerns related to traffic have been addressed.
I mean, that would be taken care of at that time, going through there, that process.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Member Kamkar?
I just want to echo the items, number Patel, brought up in, you know, we, they showed up with the land plan, they showed up with some of the items and, and there are open items in this case. And I, I know we've, we've had a lot of folks come by that have been less prepared, that got a clean vote and moved forward. And, you know, if they comply and they take care of the public safety elements, you know, they should be treated just like everybody else.
All right, last call, questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Berry?
No.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potemcoza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
No.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passes four to three.
All right, moving forward to new business item number five, Mr. Berry, would you present that one, please?
Member Berry, before you present this particular item, it does require, wait, it does require the entire caption to be read aloud. I don't know how many eminent domains you've done in the past, but if you need help, like you want a designated legal member staff to read those things and then you so moved, you're welcome to have that happen. Or if you want everybody to hear your voice, you are welcome to read it all yourself. Or if you want everybody to hear your voice, you are welcome to read it all yourself.
I'm happy to allow you to do that, you seem to be the right person for the job.
I would recommend a motion, consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2023-219, a resolution of the City Council of City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee title to certain property for road right-of-way being a 0.4614 acre, twenty thousand ninety-nine square feet, situated in the Obadiah Pit Survey A-626 in Harris County, Texas, being a portion of that certain called 11.6 acre tract described indeed to the Kids Unlimited Foundation Incorporated and recorded in file number V217722, and the official public records of real property of Harris County, Texas, for the construction and maintenance of public road improvements on certain real property described herein, authorizing the city attorney or his designee and other city officials to take such actions as are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of power of eminent domain.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, staff report?
So Mayor, this is the last piece of property we need for the Frugé Road project that EDC is working on. Although it is a little over twenty thousand square feet, the large majority of that is actually existing road right-of-way with road infrastructure there. So it's just, there's just a small sliver of it that's actually being acquired in addition to what's already recognized as established or prescriptive right-of-way. So we've gone through all the processes to acquire and have arrived at an impasse, and so the next step is to move forward with the eminent domain process.
Alright, questions, comments, concerns from council? Mayor Proton?
Yes, Lawrence, I am kind of curious here on how we get to the dollar amount that, because I see what the landowner, they came back at the 475 roughly square foot times what they're looking at, and that's what they're asking. Could you please explain the ninety percent less than?
Yes, sir, I'll do my best, and city staff may have to give me an assist on this, but essentially, as Mr. Epperson said, a large portion of the property is already in a right-of-way, and a large portion of the property is already in a floodway. So that's where that ninety percent discount, and that is similar to what the other properties in the area have been going for, that have been recognized, those two items that heavily discount the valuation of the land.
Okay, thank you. Any other, last call for questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Protemkosa?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Another chamber?
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Want to vote on five real quick?
How did Hernandez vote? Aye, so, yeah.
Thank you for that, same drill, Mr. Patel.
If I could just interrupt, we actually need you to announce the new vote since Member Kamkar came back in, seven to zero.
Seven to zero, correct, yeah, motion passed number five, seven to zero, thank you for that. Mr. Patel presenting number six, Mr. Provenz, would you read the caption into the record?
Gladly, recommend a motion, consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2023-220, a resolution of the City Council of City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire a waterline easement on certain real property being a 0.1928 acre, eight thousand three hundred ninety-eight square feet of land located in the James Hamilton Survey Abstract 876, Harris County, Texas, being a portion of Lot sixteen and a half, Block F, of the Allison Ritchie Gulf Coast Home Companies, part of Suburban Gardens, a subdivision of Record in Volume Three, Page forty, of the map of Records of said Harris County, Texas, for the construction and maintenance of public waterline improvements on certain real property described herein, authorizing the city attorney or his designee and other city officials to take such actions as are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of the power of eminent domain.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, this is a waterline easement in the Lower Kirby area that'll be used to extend water lines to some potential developments. It's actually a piece of property that Harris County owns, and Harris County has advised us that waiting to go through their process will take much longer than going through an eminent domain process. So this is essentially what we call a friendly condemnation, where they agree with us to go through the process, but it'll close the process out quicker than going through their normal processes.
Alright, thank you for that, questions, comments from council? Senator, the one before, for those in the public, Harris County, this is kind of a friendly condemnation, it's going through Harris County. It's actually a quicker way to acquire this waterline easement than going through the normal channels through Harris County. So, believe it or not, condemnation's quicker in this case, so. At their advice, we're moving forward with that. With that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote?
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Protemkosa?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar? Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Alright, thank you for that, new business item number seven, back to you, Mr. Carbone.
Thank you, Mayor, consideration and possible action, resolution R 2023-218, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we actually have a member of the public that would like to address their comments here, Mayor Proton, would you please introduce them?
Yes, Mayor, Mr. Rudy Moreno, if you'd make your way to the podium, state your name and address, we'll give you three minutes to speak, and thank you for coming out this evening.
Rudy Moreno, sixteen eighteen Hatfield Road. Good evening, Mayor Cole and members of city council. I'm here today with my wife Teresa Moreno and my in-laws Frank and Mary Helen Perez. I'm asking for your support by approving the change order with James Construction Group to eliminate a thirteen-month drainage problem at sixteen eighteen Hatfield Road, and the property directly south at the northwest corner of Hatfield and McCard Road, also owned by my in-laws. Frank and Mary Helen Perez have lived at sixteen eighteen Hatfield Road for fifty-five years, and the subject properties have been in the family for seventy-eight years. And in all the years, these properties have drained directly to the roadside ditch and have never flooded during past hurricanes and/or tropical storms. However, on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, just weeks after the removal of the roadside ditch and the installation of new box corvettes along Hatfield Road as part of the McCard Road extension, Pearland, Texas received less than a one-inch rain event, which resulted in the pics shown on page four, I hope everybody has pictures for them? Great, thank you. This occurred because the box corvettes were installed too high, not allowing the properties to properly drain. You can imagine how two scared senior citizens in their eighties felt when they woke up to water having reached their garage. That day, a temporary solution was immediately performed by the contractor to eliminate the flood risk. However, approval of today's change order will permanently resolve the drainage problem. The subject change order includes settlement terms, additional work, and corrective work. The corrective work is the work I just spoke about, and the work that must be performed to make these properties whole again. This corrective work dollar amount represents just over twenty-six percent of the total cost of the change order. Because this has not happened without approval of the change order before you, I ask again for your support by moving forward with approval. Furthermore, the executive summary, the executive summary for the change order references that this property is in closeout phase. I sincerely hope the term "closeout" means installing a proper base for grass to grow along Hatfield Road, and not just the weeds as shown on the last page of your pictures. Lastly, on behalf of Frank and Mary Helen Perez and myself, I'd like to thank Mayor Protemp Joseph Kosa, City Manager Trent Epperson, Director of Public Works Lorenzo Wingate, and the City of Pearland team currently working on this issue. Thank you for your time, and I now make myself available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno, if we have any questions, we'll come to you. We greatly appreciate you being here tonight and presenting on behalf of them. With that, we'll turn to staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, so this item is the final change order for the McCard Road project, and this is the McCard Road project between Cullen and Makawha. This project was an eighty-twenty cost share with federal funds paying for eighty percent of the project. The final change order, as mentioned, includes multiple completed items that were done under force account, as to ensure that those items did not impact the critical path as we moved through the project. Those items include waterline conflicts that had to be resolved, signal components, irrigation system power, streetlight conduit modifications, and some outfall modifications. Additionally, the general conditions that were negotiated with the contractor. It also does include the yet-to-be-completed drainage system at Hatfield that Mr. Moreno just mentioned. That had to be modified to make sure it worked properly, and we had to work through a lot of these other issues with the contractor to get to this point to be able to add that to the contract. So generally, how we arrived at this point is that all the remedies per the contract to resolve some of the disputed items were worked through and exhausted, and we arrived at a point where basically mediation was requested. And prior to that formal mediation, our city attorney Darren Coker and our projects team worked with the contractor's legal team, as well as the contractor's project team, to arrive at a settlement agreement that is pending this change order. The contractor was basically asking for one point nine million dollars for a dispute over some base material and general conditions for project delays that were outside of their control. The informal mediation resulted in that one point nine becoming eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars instead of one point nine million dollars. So after getting that amount and adjusting for all the items and all the other items and all the unused items, the final amount of this change order is seven hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifteen cents. With that, we expect Tech dot will reimburse approximately three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars of the change order. So with that, we recommend moving forward with the change order so that we can close the bulk of this project out with the remaining work to be completed on Hatfield Road for those drainage improvements. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you for that, open it up for questions, comments from council? Kamkar?
Just really quickly, Trent, so is this contractor, they acknowledged that they were deficient in the install? Is that kind of how we got here, or is it like more of a scope item, just?
Are you speaking specifically about the drainage portion of it on Hatfield?
Yeah, the part that?
So that was a, I think, and I can let others speak more specifically, but in general terms, a design that required some additional infrastructure that needed to be, some of it tweaked, as well as additional infrastructure be installed to make sure that drainage area works properly. So it wasn't anything that the contractor installed improperly?
They're on good terms then, I know when we see settlement, that's not always, I mean?
So that, I mean, you asked specifically about the drainage issue, there were other issues that were in dispute. And through that, working through that with our team and their team, we were able to arrive at what we believe is the right amount. There was a, the biggest portion of that was a dispute over some of the base material used on the side streets. And, you know, basically, based on the item itself, as it described it, and the plans and the specifications, it was one material, a different material was installed that I don't believe had any real integrity of the work issues, but it was a higher cost that I think the contractor installed and didn't necessarily need to. So that, we're not paying for.
But to the family, thank you guys for coming, we worked real hard the last three years on drainage and wanted to get better on it. We're not trying to scare anybody, and appreciate you guys' patience. Another scenario might have been more adversarial, but it sounds like we've got a positive resolution, so thank you guys, thank you, Joe.
Questions, comments?
So the seven hundred and ninety-one thousand is the total cost of all the change orders, including what needs to be repaired for flooding that's causing?
That's correct.
How much does that cost, are they charging us for fixing this problem?
The Hatfield drainage portion of it is two hundred and twelve thousand dollars and some change.
And the remaining five hundred thousand dollars is for other change orders?
So it's a multitude of items, some of them were items where we had, there were some portions of the signal push-button system that was left out of the specifications. Irrigation power was not in the plans, so those are both items that had to be built as part of the project. They just weren't in the project from a bidding standpoint, so to have a complete project needed to add those. There were some other things driven by some other entities, so there were street lighting conduit. The stub-ups for those were located where they were initially planned to be located when Center Point came back and prepared to install the streetlights, they wanted some of those in different places. And then BDD four had approved our plans, and what was in the plans, that got built when they came to inspect it. They required that we change that out to a standard detail of theirs, which was not part of the original plans, but they had not notated that when they reviewed or approved our plans. But they required that to accept the project.
So, we paid an engineering firm for all this design, correct?
Correct.
Are the engineering firm here today?
Believe we do have representatives.
So, would you guys say you guys missed some of these items? Go to the podium.
Please go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, please.
James, J.B. Ferguson, fourteen sixty-two Oak Tree Drive, Houston, Texas. So I was, I am now the project manager for Freeze and Nichols over the McCard Road project. So I can speak in terms of the pedestrian signals, push buttons, as well as the irrigation, and those two were, should have been included in the plan set, but were not.
So, why would the taxpayers take on the burden on that when you guys screwed up? And how much was this project cost for engineering fees?
So if I could maybe jump in real quick, you know, so items that aren't bid as part of the project but are required for the project, you know, those, while we don't like to pay for them through change orders, they're things that we would have been paying for anyway, so there may be a premium there we're paying because it had to be change ordered. I think the area where there were, I think, more significant misses in the plans were with some water main conflicts, where the same firm that designed the water main project was coordinating that with the road project, and we had some water main conflicts there that had to be addressed because they weren't correctly coordinated within the plans.
So did we hire two different engineering firms, or was Freeze and Nichols the main?
Same firm.
Okay, so it's the same firm that screwed up two different places?
Yes, I think, you know, one of them are things that should have been in the project, the other one are conflicts that should not have occurred that cost us money.
Well, as Freeze, are we going to go ask other insurers to pay for some of these costs?
So I believe we've had conversations with them, I think we would want to reserve that for our legal team to help us make that determination of whether we do that or not, and which items to go after as well.
So sir, how long have you been on this project?
It's been about a year and a half at this point.
Okay, so it would be fair for us to say part of the cost burden falls on you guys, would it be fair?
I would say yes, that would be a fair assessment to say that it partially falls on the project team.
You can understand the heartburn we would have paying millions of engineering fees, hiring you guys on several projects, it's not this, to come back with this kind of change order. And I'm not, I'm not an engineer at all, but I would think you would have not had this problem. for our residents, that you guys would have paid attention and figured out a solution before it happened. I can understand somebody living there for 78 years and having this issue on a, I can't even imagine what would have happened if Harvey was here for them, correct? Fair enough? So I will approve part of this. I'll vote for part of it to fix it immediately, but I'm not going to approve the remaining balance. I think it's only fair that we negotiated down where you guys take on some of this burden. Do you agree?
I would agree. We can have further conversations about it.
Mr. Patel, if I could weigh in, I just want to make sure that we distinguish between the contractor and the engineer. This change order is for the contractor. We're absolutely going to continue the conversation and work through resolution with the engineering firm, but the contractor had nothing to do with the engineering things. And before you can even approach the engineer, you have to say, this is the amount of money that is necessary, or because of missed work, or whatever you want to phrase it as. We have to establish the amount first before we can have that contractor. And approving this change order is what actually establishes that amount. Again, this change order is for the contractor, not the engineer. After we have this set amount, then we can go and approach the engineering firm to say, how do you intend to help us make this right?
Okay, so thank you for that clarification. I didn't realize that. Okay, so we're going to approve this 651, oh, sorry, $791,000 and change today. What assurance do we have from city council that you guys will follow through and bring this money back to our pockets, right? Like, that's very important to me.
Yes, sir. So there are a few different avenues. Of course, we're going to, it starts with the conversation. And, you know, we take the change order to the engineering firm. Your assurance ultimately is one less of a legal in nature and more in selection nature, is the way that I would phrase it. You have control over whether or not you let the engineering firm do any additional city projects in the future. And I would anticipate that anybody on council would say, did they step up to the plate and own up for their mistakes, if there were mistakes? And did they contribute to that?
Rishi, I will back you up on that in the future. Any other contracts moving forward, if this hasn't been resolved, I'm with you on it.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, we don't anticipate it getting that far, though. I mean, I want to be fair to the engineering firm. We do think that after this item happens tonight, the engineering firm is absolutely willing to have that conversation with us. Because I think we broadcast it first, and we said, well, when we have the amount, we'll resume the discussion.
Would that be a fair assessment?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Just real quick, the team, is Freeze and Nichols, they guys doing our rate assessment, our impact fee assessment? Is that the firm?
Yeah, they did do our most recent impact fee study.
They're the one telling us that we have to do this much more facilities, and it's got to cost this much more. That's what you do, right, is you project out the facilities?
I mean, they haven't told us that we need to do X number of facilities. We have a water, wastewater master plan that describes what's needed for that system. And they take that information and walk it through a impact fee study process.
And if I recall, we raised the impact fee at their recommendation, right?
Their impact fee study concluded with a, with a recommend, well, an impact fee number that we adopted, which was an increase.
I think Member Patel is all over this. And things happen. I believe Freeze and Nichols has a branch here in the city. Is that correct?
They do.
So it's one thing if we catch something. It's one thing when you, I still kind of borrow this. You scare somebody at the daylights, and I guess you guys are being semi-repentant, and we appreciate that. There are some other people who come in here, and they duck and dodge, and you're not doing that. And I have deep appreciation for that, but we work real, real hard to build the public's trust. And this breaks the trust, especially when you're doing it, and you've never seen that happen. And they go and they say, what the hell are you doing out there? And it just casts a pale on all the other stuff that we do. And you guys are going to pay money, and we're going to fix it. But we have to go and rebuild that trust every single time an issue like this happens, because they're going to go tell 50 people. Probably told everybody in the damn neighborhood. And we look like we don't know what we're doing. This just can't happen like that.
So I won't defend this particular situation or instance, but I do want to put it in context that we have a long, longstanding, you know, working relationship with Freeze and Nichols. They've done a lot of the engineering on many of our capital projects and have always performed well, and I think stepped up to the plate in situations like that. So I think we, we go through the process of, there were things that occurred, and we go through the normal processes, and as long as they're willing to work with us and address those, then we...
Agreed.
And you have a good local firm that does have a sizable office here as well, so we'll work through that process.
I appreciate their economic development that they do in our city. The reality, I want to say, because you sat through this meeting, our budget is $114 million. We're taking more money from the taxpayer now than we did last year. If the fire chief here has been telling us we need to have more fire trucks, this is half a fire truck. Real money. And because somebody didn't do their job, and it wasn't necessarily you, I bet that person's long gone. You know, we have to go find this somewhere else. So Trent, where's this money coming from, by the way? Just, they say almost $800,000. How are we going to pay them?
So there is approximately, I have to get it pulled back up.
It's 1.1 still in contingency in the...
Yeah, so there's $319,000 of that. We expect a reimbursement from Tech Dot on, as this is a reimbursable, many of these are reimbursable expenses from Tech Dot. And then actually, the project budget itself, we've still got a little bit over a million dollars in the project balance. So the overall project did come in under the budget itself by a significant amount.
That's a relief. Anyways, you just hear why this has to get fixed. I'm going to agree with Member Patel and Member Coza that we need to put a little bit of moratorium until there's some level of concurrence between the parties. And I'd like to see a follow-up memo. Is that unreasonable? You know, of, hey, here's what happened. But this is a public trust thing more than it is an engineering thing. So I will support it tonight, but we do need to have resolution. And I agree with you folks.
We will communicate with council how this is resolved. Thank you.
For the folks from Freeze and Nickel, I'd like to tell you thank you for coming out, agreeing and understanding our situation and willing to work with us, so I really appreciate that. I have a question for Mr. Moreno, if you would step to the podium, please.
Yes, sir.
So you gave us some photos here of the rain on 8/19. I can't tell. It looks like where the water's at might be at the front of a garage. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, right at the front of the garage.
Did it enter the garage at all?
It partially entered the garage. It would have entered the front door, except for the front door, the elevation of the front door is a little higher. But ultimately, it got right up to the, to the front facing of the house.
Okay, and as far as, how long did it take for this? I guess it evaporated since it couldn't go anywhere.
It receded pretty quickly, but only because the contractor came out and did an immediate remedy to kind of divert the flow and kind of to help that. But it did, in their defense, it did recede, but luckily, we were able to flag down the contractor and say, hey, can you do something? He did something right on the spot.
Is that temporary fix? Is it still there, or was it just that one time?
It's still there today.
Okay, all right, so if we had another rain, because I assume between now, what kind of, what type of timeframe, Trent, are we looking at being able to have this fix in place roughly?
I'm looking around. I can't read Jennifer's lips, so I'll see if Lorenzo knows.
So typically, as soon as we get the change order approved, the contractor's still out there doing work. So sometime in a relatively short window, they'd be able to get back to it.
I didn't realize the contract. Could you step up to the podium if you don't mind? Yes.
Hello, I'm Lily Thorson. I reside at 3112 Shade Lane, Pearland, Texas, so I'm Pearlandian.
All right, thank you.
Brandon Rutledge, 14542 River Forest Drive in Houston, Texas. House Legal Counsel for James Construction.
Okay, thank you. My, just out of curiosity, because I kind of want to give the Perez's just kind of a rough guesstimate, not that it's written in stone or anything. Roughly, what kind of timeframe can they expect? A month, two years, six months? What type of timeframe would we be looking at if it's approved tonight? You know, for y'all to be, get this problem taken care of.
So the Perez's property, the materials that is associated with extending some of the drainage on that street, and that a six to eight weekly time on those boxes we're going to order. As soon as this is approved, I'll get those ordered tomorrow. And as soon as we get those in, we'll be out there. So hopefully, before the end of the year, we should be out there.
Okay, so six to eight weeks to get the product in for y'all to do the work?
Yes.
Three months.
Okay, three months roughly, okay. Okay, that's fine. I just want...
Work won't take long.
Well, no, I just wanted them to kind of understand what they're going to be under as far as, you know, is it end of the year, it looks like, kind of somewhere right in there. So, all right, thank you very much for that. I appreciate that.
Right, I just, I just need a little bit more information for my own notification. I'm looking at the photos Mr. Perez left for me, and it looks to me like the road is higher than the actual driveway in and of itself. And if we're going to underground drainage versus a ditch along this road, how are we going to, how are we going to mend the two? If the road is actually higher than the driveway? I mean, it's just, just for my own notification, I don't know anything about drainage other than water goes downhill. So and I can imagine that this is a, quite a stretch, right, along this road? Not just, I sympathize with you guys, but I mean, there are other people along this road that are going to be affected as well. So curious, what's the, what's the distance?
So for the Perez's property, for that property, there's an inlet that actually was installed. It's just, the elevation is just up a little bit higher, so the water's not getting into the, into the box. So the remedy is to take that inlet that has that opening and change the top on it to allow the water to drain into that box, which then goes underground and into that underground system.
So is it going to be the elevated, the elevated inlet?
No, so right now, it's a Type E inlet that has openings on the sides. So it'll be a Type A that has, that allows the water to come in over the top.
Okay, so it's going to be like a flat grade?
Flush to grade, yeah.
That's right.
Yes, sir.
And so I guess there's going to be some re-grading, surface grading associated with that?
So right now, my understanding is that the, that box, the current inlet is just up higher, and so...
Reset it.
Ideally, we're taking that existing inlet off lower in the grade, which should now allow that, that natural grade to get back to the, to that great inlet. There will be some re-grading along the ditch line, just to make that flow, get positive drainage. But everything else should flow fine in terms of where that yard is at, the issues in that yard.
We have some sort of swell towards that grade.
We've got the design engineer on here if we want, if we want any more details on that.
Yeah, if I chime, I know what we're going to do there. So the top of the box is a little higher right now. So it is not going to work if we just put, install inlet on the top. So what is going to happen is by, from the box, we'll have like 12-inch side bleed and have a small inlet at a lower elevation. So we can allow that front yard to flow into that ditch, that inlet. So it collects the flow and puts it into the box. So that, on the upstream side, we'll extend it to, because there's a little depression area, so water is holding there. So then we, we will fix the upstream side culvert too, so there will not be depression. There will not be water holding in the ditch. Right now, it holds water and doesn't flow. So there will be inlet installed at the front yard of those two homes, and which will be set below the existing grade. So it will make sure that it is set below so that the yard flows into it, and the road will flow into that too.
The reason I ask is because it doesn't look like there's any ditch to divert or direct water at all, so...
So that, that's the reason this 12-inch pipe, because that will allow us to depress the inlet, so it won't be as high as the inlet box right now. So we can set the inlet a little below the existing ground. But we don't need to set real below, because if we are below a couple of inches, water will collect and flow into that inlet.
And I'm at, I mean, the Freeze and Nichols engineers are here. Do you have anything to add to what Raj just said?
Yeah, my name is Umes Casey. I'm representing DC Engineering, and we worked with F&amp;I for this project. What Raj says is pretty much right, so we are adding one more inlet, great inlet, to, to help the area drain, the surface drainage, so that surface drainage can go into the great inlet. And the existing inlet, right, which is there right now, we are loading that by a couple of inches so that surface area can get into that inlet as well. So there are three driveways that are close to each other, so it was hard to get drainage done around those driveways. So we are adding one more great inlet between the driveways, and we are loading the existing great inlet and tying, we are tying into the existing box at the intersection.
Okay.
That's how it's going to be.
So it sounds like you guys have a plan. And it's going to take six weeks to get the materials in, and probably a few more weeks to get it fixed. And how long, how long is this street? How long was this project? I'm assuming it's the entire street, or is it just happens to be this one inlet that was just above the grade?
To my, to our knowledge, it is just one inlet that was a couple of inches higher than the ground, and then we found out that later, after ground modification.
It's just off corner from McCard on Hatfield, so coming into, so the McCard Road, these were the tie-ins basically to McCard Road, bringing that roadside ditch and that water to the drainage system in McCard Road.
Got you, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, good deal.
Member Cam Car?
Minor item, thank you for the opportunity. Because we have a lot of jurisdictions involved, there's the Tech Dot, all that. Who's responsible for shooting grade on the front end of this and putting the NASBILts? Is that in our box, or is that in the Tech Dot? How does that work, Lorenzo?
Also, grades and elevations and contours, those things are typically left to the contractor, right? So they'll shoot grades and construct it per the plans. And then, of course, there's project inspectors that are out during the course of construction, they inspected at that time. But that inspector's not necessarily shooting grades, right?
That's fine. I work in this space professionally, and my engineer always has those items of looking pre and post and all those. So because we're doing changes, I would just, I would pay the money if we don't have it to go get a NASBILT and to go shoot that thereafter, because we are making changes at the end. And we want to make sure our plans dive, and especially as we have these new systems where we're trying to evaluate where our pipes are and all these other items, little changes. Just want to make sure that we finish it out, and it ties out, especially with what we're doing now.
Red lines are typically part of our contract and required, so I'm assuming they're included in this project as well, so that'll be, that'll be done.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Rudy. I know you're, you're an engineer as well. I just want to make sure that you understand what's been going on here, that you're comfortable with what we've been talking about.
Yes, sir.
Let the Perez's know.
Yes, sir. I would like to make one additional comment, which, and I think I heard it here tonight, but this addresses the property at 1618 Hatfield, which is where the house, where they reside. The property directly south of them, which is the corner lot, the northwest corner, that has the same drainage problem. But I think I heard tonight that there's going to be another inlet installed there to address that issue. Is that correct? Because, because otherwise, we're going to be in the same boat on that corner lot.
Did we confirm that?
My understanding is there is an existing culvert at the north. McCard is the east-west road, so northwest corner, there is existing culvert at the corner that takes care of the northwest quadrant of that area. And then I think there is, the two inlets to the north should take care of the remaining area.
But that's going to address the issue south of the next driveway. It's not going to address the issue between the existing driveway and the driveway in between, which is the property in front of the question. I mean, if you look at those pictures, it clearly shows, I mean, you can see the grass and the standing water. All this naturally drained to the drainage, to the roadside ditch prior to this, to the removal of the roadside ditch. So I know, you know, and let me, this has been going on for over a year. So I know, you know, I, and, and let me, this has been going on for over a year. And I've had multiple meetings at the job site or at their house with, with contractors in, in the city. And first and foremost, I appreciate everyone's time about this, because this has been an ongoing issue. But I want to make sure that when we address this, we address it permanently, that resolves this problem for both properties. Not only for my in-laws, but even the people upstream. Because, you know, that, this, this drainage goes all through there and goes south. I believe, if I looked at the plans correctly, it bypasses the Card Road system and keeps going south. That's just from what I remember. I may be wrong, but again, all I'm saying is I'd like to make sure that we address both the issues permanently to, to where the property north, directly in front of their property and the property in the northwest corner can properly drain.
So, so Mr. Moreno, just, I want to make sure I understand which properties you're referring to. So the property to the north of the Perez's? Trent, can we get the, can we get the picture, put up the aerial view of the-
If you can pull the picture up, I can show you. Or I don't know if that's something I can do here.
Josh is, Josh is looking for it right now. I think if we can maybe clarify which properties Mr. Moreno is talking about, then, then the engineers that did the redesign can address that. So is it the property on the west side of Hatfield to the north of the Perez's?
Talking about the property on the northwest corner of Hatfield and McCord Road.
Okay.
Which is a vacant lot.
Is that lot owned by the Perez's?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
And then the property directly north of that, which is where they live.
Correct.
Can you look at this picture? So what Umes is telling right now is there is existing SET at the northwest corner of McCord and-
It's northeast.
Hatfield Road. This-
So north, north is to the right?
North is to the right, yes. And this is the northwest corner of that intersection. So this should drain the flow between- So this- These, these two are the inlets that Umes just mentioned, this probably, this is the one. I don't know, I, I don't have the final design, this is preliminary, preliminary, just a sketch. And this is what I was referring to, resetting the inlet, because we cannot set the inlet on the top of the box. So there will be a little side lead and, and inlet set below. So there will be an inlet between this driveway and this driveway. And there will be inlet between this one and this one. And the next one should go to this SET. And definitely there needs to be some re-grading done so that the pounding doesn't occur within the property and goes to this inlet. So it can be addressed on site without really designing the real flow line elevations, it can be done there.
So I think it appears that they've addressed all those properties. And maybe what we need to do, instead of continuing to try to engineer it while we're here, is, is we can sit down with Mr. Moreno and, and, and the engineers and walk through the details of the plan and make sure that we do have everything addressed.
I think it's good, good exercise. I think there's been a lot of eyes on it. I think Raj and his team will make sure that we get that. Any other questions, comments from council, real quick? I would like to say a couple of things. First, James Construction, thank you for working with us on this last change order and how we negotiated and came through all this. Also, you know, being in construction and development, these happen sometimes. They're never fun, they're never comfortable to have these conversations, but necessary. And I want to thank y'all for, you know, for working through this and, and working on this, on this project. And, you know, Freezing Nichols, I mean, again, you guys have a great body of work over time with this city. Things happen. And unfortunately, you got to roll your sleeves up and fix it and get to it. I do appreciate the candidness, I appreciate the, the humbleness in, in, in tonight and representing Freezing Nichols. We'll have these conversations offline and we'll figure out where they go. My time here, it's not the first time we've had an engineer or contractor, anybody else, you know, have an issue. And all those issues, we've always sat down, worked things out, and, I mean, we do have remedies, we don't want to go there. We'd rather work through things and, and, and make it, make it whole, make the taxpayer whole and, and, and work with the companies, you know, in doing so. So I, we'll get there. It may not be tomorrow, but we'll get there. And so I, I want to just thank everybody. Mr. Moreno, thank you for bringing this, you know, to us even a year ago, as we worked through this project to completion. So thank you, you know, for your, your patience. A lot of people, a lot of eyes, a lot of hands have been right there trying to work on this. And still got a little bit to go, let's, let's finish it up and let's get it right for everybody involved, okay? All right, last call.
Just one question, since we have both parties here. What, what's the status of that dip at McCawa and McCord?
Did we do some jacking, mudjacking?
We did. Do we have any other, we did some mudjacking. We know we have some additional work that's going to need to be done when, when McCawa is actually rebuilt. And I believe we're still looking at maybe some mitigation measures between, that would occur before we get to that construction, so.
And rushing in between, we've got dip signs to try and help people to not launch. Go 40 miles an hour and see what happens.
Yeah, don't, don't do that. I did-
I, I guess, I, I'm just trying to understand, how, how do we miss that? That's a big ball.
So I believe where that dip is, is actually a failure in the, in the, in the subgrade on McCord itself. The old part of McCord that was built 20 years ago. So it wasn't part of the design.
Product of droughts, probably from 2011. All right, last call. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Protemcoza?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, with that, we'll move to item number eight. Mr. Kamkar, would you present that, please?
Yes, sir. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2023 dash two-three, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is for the second of two pieces of equipment that are being ordered as part of an early works package for the Natoryum Air Handling Equipment Project. The first of those was on your last agenda. So these two items are long lead items, long lead time items that we've already gotten enough of the design done, that these are the specified equipment that will go into the project. So getting them on order now allows us to significantly reduce the project completion timeline by completing the remainder of the design and the bidding process for the construction while we await these long lead items being on order. So this particular item is the custom pool dehumidification air handling units that will be supplied by Texas Air Systems. And we recommend approval in the amount of $651,970. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any questions, comments from council? Long awaited.
So, you know, I read that Carrier had a lower price product, but you guys said the operating costs were higher on this, is that correct?
I think the Carrier product was what was actually ordered as part of the last early works package as part of the other components of the system. The, the chillers were Carrier, and those were, we ordered those, they were approved to be ordered at the last council meeting. And so these are the dehumidification units.
Okay.
Dakin was the other one, they were higher.
Okay, I just want to make sure, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Protemcoza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Yeah, it's one of those items when you have to replace your air conditioning at home. Not fun, expensive, but you got to have it working, you know? So this is just a huge system, so appreciate that. We'll move to matters removed from consent agenda. With that, Mayor Protem, would you present item E as in Echo?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2023 dash two-three-eight, so moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Staff report, and then we'll go to Mr. Patel, who pulled this.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So as everyone is aware, there are still significant supply chain issues in the automotive industry. And that'll continue to be exacerbated as, as the UAW is on strike. So how that's impacted us is that we've been unable to get manufacturing dates or delivery dates on several vehicles that we've ordered as much as a year and a half or more ago. The majority of the manufacturers are not producing fleet vehicles in, in any significant volume and have not taken new orders in what amounts to as much as, as a year on certain vehicles. So much like we did a, a couple of months ago with the police cruisers, we were able to locate three Tahos for the fire department at a dealership in the Dallas area that were the right models and, and everything that we needed for our fire department. And then we ordered those under an emergency purchase order so that we could get those secured. These replace actually two Tahos that have been on order, one of them for over 12 months and one of them for over 20 months. And we haven't even gotten the, that they give you, I think it's the VIN when they go into the manufacturing line. So they haven't even been scheduled for manufacturing at this point. And then the purchase of the third one, or we haven't even purchased the third one that was budgeted for because they haven't opened up their order decks for us to be able to place any of those orders. And really, we don't see any end to that. So we've ta, us, like many other entities, we're kind of just searching for when there are vehicles available on the market and are, are trying to get our hands on those so we can replace these vehicles that really were due to be replaced last year. And so the, the costs do reflect the current cost of vehicles, as well as the current cost of upfitting. And this was done under emergency purchase order, so we have, we have bought the vehicles and we recommendation, recommend the ratification of that with Freedom Chevrolet in the amount of $221,550, which does include the upfitting as well. Thank you.
So first of all, I guess I'm kind of confused. I guess we're waiting, we're going to vote on something that we already purchased. So if we said no, do you return the course back?
We'd have to review the contract that was done at the time.
So it's an oxymoron, but okay. I mean, it just, to me, what's frustrating is this, right? Like, we put an order in, vehicles are not there. But all of a sudden, if we pay more, and how much more do we pay than what the original purchase price was?
I think between what we purchased and then what was budgeted for the third one, about an additional $35,000. And that is not just the vehicles, it's also the cost of out, upfitting, which we're seeing very similar, you know, the, the impacts of inflation have impacted upfitting, just like you've seen it impact vehicles. So, you know, we look at this from a standpoint of you've got a vehicle ordered at a price that's never going to arrive, or you find a vehicle and, and you get it ordered, and, you know, we're going to see these kind of costs on future vehicles as well.
Well, look, again, I, the reason I pulled this was, I just want, Trent, I wanted you to hear it from me, and I know I told you I'm not a fan, and I guess my neighbor next door just said it best, it's bait and switch, right? You're ordering something, and then all of a sudden, we're going to pay $35,000 more. And it's going to continue, I guess this will continue. So I, I want council to be aware of it. It's not going to stop, because we're, we're going to continue to have it, right? We're going to continue to buy these things at more price. And at some point, we, we got to put our foot down to say, we're not going to pay it. I mean, it, it just, to me, at this point, if we continue this, every time we buy 10 police vehicles and then three fire vehicles, where do we stop, right? I mean, the system's going to say that we guys can afford it and we're going to continue to pay for it. So that's the reason I pulled it out. I want to have a discussion where, I guess, council feels, at what point do we stop? I mean, at what point do we say, we're not going to continue, guys, to allow, just go buy these vehicles or anything at over price that we don't have a budget for?
I'm curious if, is there something other than Tahos we could get? If there's other vehicles that we can get that are ready that we don't have to pay $35,000 more for?
So I'm going to let the chief weigh in on that.
Not for the use for these. We have specific uses for specific vehicles. So we have Tahos that we use for command purposes. We also have pickup trucks that we do use for code enforcement, FMO. Currently, we're doubling up FMO and code enforcement personnel because we don't have the vehicles to utilize. So these Tahos were to be purchased back in the past at those prices then. They're never going to be available, therefore, these aren't added prices, they're today's current prices to be able to replace those. But they just, they're never going to be available from those current, those past models. They never released them and they're never going to arrive. So that's where we came to this position now, where they are more expensive. But it's, if we put in now to buy a brand-new Tahoe and it was approved today, this is the price we would pay for that Tahoe.
You have a question. This is obviously for fire. We talked about this, when the fleet, you got it. What was the characterization you said about the quality of the fleet, I think at the time that you received it?
Well, it was less than desirable, and we've discussed that. There's a lot of reasons for that. But, you know, long story short, we were doing a replacement plan to get these purchased in a timely manner. The vendors, the vendor side is what dropped the ball on us, to be honest on this, that we were left hanging with a budgeted amount for approved vehicles. And they never came to fruition through the manufacturers.
The only thing, I, I think Member Patel's has some really, really valid comments that I concur with. I do think there is a process around the emergency. I don't know what the process around emergency procurement is. I, I would love to have an agenda item maybe in the future when we have a more slow time to discuss that. But I do have another angle to that. I think the emergency procurement process probably needs to be reviewed. But I'll say this, if, if you have concern about the spending, the agenda items earlier this evening was the place to voice concerns about the spending. And nobody could give us a second to spend one penny less than what we projected. And so I, I hear the comments about spending, but the time to discuss that was probably about 40 minutes ago. So I would just say, we talk a good game about it, we got to back it up.
Call a question, please.
If, if, I think Laney's question maybe wasn't answered though, Mayor. If she was asking chief, maybe if there are other types of vehicles other than Tahoe, maybe Yukon or Expedition or something like that, why specifically Tahos? Thank you, Mayor.
The SUV-type vehicle that we're using for this purpose is what is needed. For instance, I drive a Ford Explorer, it's a response SUV. They're just the same price, they're, they're all in that same grouping, so it's a matter of what you can find out there. And those are the only three we found in the state. We've looked far and wide. We've even taken time to drive and go onto lots ourselves to try to find some. And these are the only three in the state that they found that are currently there in Dallas, and they were, they were about to go. That's why we tried to act upon that quickly.
So if I can address the emergency PO question. So as the chief just stated, that if we didn't provide, if we didn't purchase these, they would have sold them to somebody else before we would have had a chance to bring them to the city council. These, based on the amount of budgeted funds available to buy these vehicles, the additional cost of this is, it's well within my purview to change order anyway. So I felt comfortable with moving forward with this as a, as an emergency purchase order because of those things.
Just real quick, I, I don't disagree on some of that, but you literally have a member of the council saying that we bait and switched them. And that's not, we, we want to build trust in the team, we want to build trust in, you know, the process.
And I would disagree with bait and switch.
I didn't say it.
I know that. I would disagree with that. You know, in, in today's world, you, you order certain things and it's just never going to show up. It's never going to show up. It's a, it's a, it's just an order out in cyber world somewhere that's never going to come to fruition. So I, I think maybe, you know, replacement of vehicles and those types of things, maybe there's a little bit more of a policy about how long we're going to have an open purchase order. And then obviously, you know, if, if it's never going to happen, how, where and what are we looking to, you know, secure that? how, where and what are we looking to, you know, secure that? We do have vehicles that need to be replaced. We don't need the rest of our fleet to fall in disrepair, even though we had yourself wanting to cut those internal service funds and part of that was in maintenance. And so, you know, we don't need, we don't need that to the rest of our, of our fleet. Oh, just a second. And so, you know, I, I disagree with bait and switch. How maybe it was presented, maybe we need to have more robust conversations around it. I think that's fine. How we have a policy around it, I think that's, I think that's worthy of a discussion. But from time to time, things are there. We bought police vehicles same way.
We bought, we bought 10 of those a couple of months ago.
Yeah, a few months ago, because what we ordered was not available and we had to go get what was available. And so unfortunately, that's the world we're living in today. I'm not, I'm not saying we go and spend more than we have to. But sometimes in order to keep our fleet, we just heard we have people doubling up in vehicles. And how efficient are they at their jobs? I think that's part of it.
I just have a question. So when we ordered these, Trent, I guess it was, we have, obviously, we didn't have to send them any money when we ordered them. And then secondly, is there not any recourse to say, hey, you, we ordered these in good faith and at this price and you're just now telling me, I'm not gonna manufacture these anymore. You have to go buy these more expensive ones? I'm just kind of wondering how the conversation went.
Sure. So we haven't sent them any money, first of all, so no issue there. The, these are dealerships that we're buying these through on these cooperative contracts. So those cooperative contracts are what sets those, those, those costs or prices. And so, you know, they, they accepted those orders at the time expecting that the manufacturers would build those vehicles and the manufacturers haven't built those vehicles. They haven't even, you know, given, they haven't even put those into their process to where you, you know that they're gonna go onto the line. So, you know, being 12 plus and 20 plus months ago, I, with the state of the automotive supply chain, well, I don't think we'll ever see those vehicles.
They're building Tahos.
They're building the top end Tahos. It's, I mean, it's, I think the manufacturers have realized all the, so if you look at the manufacturers, the major manufacturers of vehicles, they have not recovered capacity, their, their capacity from where they were before the pandemic. They're still well, well below the number of vehicles they were producing before the pandemic. So I think what they've seen is there's a shortage of vehicles generally. The higher end vehicles always get a premium. And so they're producing those vehicles with the capacity they do have. They're not producing fleet vehicles. You know, I think this is anecdotal, but when I spent some time on a few car lots recently for a car purchase, there were, there were, there were platinum models everywhere. There wasn't a whole lot of anything else on any of the lots we went to. And I think the manufacturers are just, you know, based on the state and what they can produce right now, they're, they're producing the ones that make the most money off of. We're, we, we kept being told heading into this fall that, that they would likely open the order banks up. And I think to date, they still have not opened up any of the order banks. They can't tell us when they're gonna open the order banks. And, you know, kind of what we're hearing through the industry is it may be another couple of years before they work through these supply issues from the manufacturers. It's not a good situation and I understand it. It's gonna, it's gonna cost us money. I think that, you know, going back to having a robust motor pool and doing things the right way.
Be able to absorb some of those.
We can absorb some of those things.
Costs we weren't necessarily expecting, but it is what it is, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Let me clarify something, Mayor. When I said bait, baiting and switch, I'm certainly not talking about the city. I was talking about the manufacturers, right? So let me, let me be very clear on that. Second, I would tell you what, I guess the heartburn I got, and if my memory serves me correctly, I think the 10 police vehicles we bought were $3,000 more per vehicle. If I'm not mistaken, I think total we paid $30,000. We're picking up three vehicles today for $35,000 more. So the trend is that the next time we do it, it will be $10,000, right? I'm just saying. I'm not saying it's, it's gonna happen, but it could. So just be aware, right? And then end of the day, the motor vehicle fund may run down now pretty quickly. Maybe we're not putting enough in there. That's a conversation for another day. And that's the only reason I pulled it. So thank you for the time.
I think it's a fair discussion and I think we, we should have more of a robust discussion on policy and around the policy of it. Last call for questions. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote on item E.
Mayor Protem Coza.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, with that, Member Hernandez, would you place item M on the table, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor. This item is regarding appointments to boards and commissions. And I move specifically that we appoint Mayor Kevin Cole to the development authority of Pearland.
Second. We have a motion of second. Just by way of this, this was a position that was held by previous Mayor Reed on the development authority of Pearland. As we know, this is where the dollars flow back through to the city from the Turks. And we, from time to time, have a difficulty with corum. And so it came to our attention, we actually have a meeting this week. It just came to our attention that I think we do have a corum slated, but if we have somebody that has life getting in the way, we might have a problem with corum this week. So we, through the, myself, Mayor Protem, past Mayor Protem, just keeping with the previous action that the mayor would serve in that position. Member Carbone serves on that. Trent or Lawrence, remind me, the DAP can have up to three or four council member? I'm trying to remember how it's worded in the, in the bylaws serving on it.
And now we miss Darren. So I believe it is three or four. I don't know the specific amount, Mayor.
I think it's three and the mayor could be one of those. And so just the decision to bring to you guys was keeping with past practice that the mayor would serve and I would replace Mayor Reed on that board. You have a question? I know you pulled that.
No, sir, I just wanted understanding. This was my first time, so I apologize.
No, it's all good, all good. And we, I think there's some $11 million flowing back through the city this week. So we kind of not wanna miss that and not have to delay it, so.
11.227 million.
That's it. I was gonna say something different, so I didn't wanna get it right.
We do, we do wanna make sure we get that this week.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions, com, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Coza.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, good deal. Moving forward, other business that was none. Mayor, council issues for city council discussion. Council discussion regarding proposed amendments to the Unified Development Code Ordinance, number 2000T, tree protection and preservation. With that, I'm gonna turn it to Member Barry. I think you were the first on this, were you the second? And Mayor Protem was the second. With that, Member Barry, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Much appreciated. You know, my, my intention is to amend, amend the tree ordinance for the city of Pearland. And the reason is, is just because of the egregious nature of, of the actual, of the actual UDC itself, right? So we have inside the, the actual discussion information, there was, or there was some information placed. Missing that somewhere where I saw the, the actual numbers of the actual, maybe it was in our email. But there was an actual email that was sent out that stated the amounts of money that the various organizations contributed to the tree trust. And in that list, and I don't think it's all of them. I think Dr. Schuffler had a, was, had a, recently had to pay some cash into that as well. But at the end of the day, it's, well, it's, it's significant amounts of money. So for example, the, the actual charter school that's going in up here on the corner had to pay in excess of $200,000 into the tree trust because their, the actual footprint of their property couldn't hold the number of trees that they were required to pay. And if you look at the actual ordinance in and of itself, you have, you know, depending on the size of the trunk of the tree, which is the diameter of the actual tree that you're cutting down, if you have a, say a 30 inch tree, you're gonna have to pay 300% or put 300% in inches of trees back onto the property and/or put them somewhere else or pay a fine. And that fine is $200 per inch. So if you can imagine $200 per inch of trees that this charter school had to pay was quite a lot of trees. So just to put a number in perspective, 30 inch tree would have a 300%, a 300% impact, which would require 90 inches of trees. Of those 90 inches of trees could be three inch trees, it could be six inch trees, whatever the sizes are, could ultimately result in a number of trees, sizable number of trees. So, but at the end of the day, I think it's egregious. I think that if we're trying to protect the canopy of Pearland and not the hammock, if we're trying to protect the canopy of Pearland, which I agree that we need to protect, if we're trying to protect said canopy, why don't we change this ordinance to something that's a little bit more reasonable, whether it be financially for the business and or individual, to something that is more equivalent to the size of the, the actual hammock of the individual tree at full age? And I'm fine with keeping the percentages of said trees, but at the end of the day, I think that we need to be able to, we need to be able to reel this in a little bit. Does that make sense? I see Member Coza is my second here and he's kind of chuckling.
Yeah, you were reversing hammock and canopy. That was kind of comical, but it's all good.
Heard of hammock.
I just, you know, you brought up the, it wasn't an email format that we had. And basically, the total dollar amount, I guess, that has been contributed to our refund, if that's what you wanna call it, has been about 1.5 million is what we've collected through that. We've got Lonza being the largest contributor at 555,000. Then it comes down to Lauren Decor out on Business Center. They've got 446,000. They're the, I guess, two biggest. Then you throw in the school right here next to City Hall at 212,000. So that's the bulk of where it's at. There's some other fairly decent sized numbers in here, but those are the, the, the largest six figure folks that have contributed to that. I know Vance, you know, had some discussion on this. And, you know, like we've talked about, I'm, I'm kind of in agreement with Member Barry as far as with Dr. Schuffler's property here. He had a 30 inch tree that the founding veterinarians planted, you know, years ago, back late 60s, early 70s, whatever it was. And, you know, the trees grew. Back then, of course, we didn't have a tree ordinance. They just liked the look of it. Also had large animals that were out on the area of this part of their property that gave shade to, as far as that goes. And I'm kind of in agreement when you look at a situation where Dr. Schuffler was put in. When you look at the canopy of the trees and he doesn't have the property to be able to put that in. And I think if my memory serves me correctly, it was 14, $15,000 that he had to pay into the, up, he's pointing north of that, so, sorry. Okay. Okay, fair enough. So at any rate, you know, I, I think when it comes down to it, I drive down Pearland Parkway, any of the other streets that, that have medians in the middle where we have trees in it. And we don't have a forest in the median. We do have trees spread across. To me, if you have oak trees, given time, they turn into very beautiful trees. Instead of having a bunch of little sticks on top of each other with a larger canopy across the whole. So, you know, I, I, I agree with Member Barry that it needs some revamping. And I, I don't know what Member Barry's timeline is, but I, I think maybe the UDC rewrite would be a good place for that. He's shaking and said no. You know, somewhere along that line, I, I feel that if, if we address it and correct it at one time instead of double paying for it. But I'm open to hear, hear your argument and hear your discussion points on that. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at.
Well, I mean, you know, I don't expect the UDC rewrite to take, to happen within the next year. You know, I think it's gonna take some time to develop, develop that process and figure out what it is we're gonna do. It's gonna be a pretty extensive process. And even if we were to undertake that process and within the next year, it would take at least a year to get something that's gonna be reviewable, so to speak. So that's gonna a couple of years. We can pass this ordinance now and have it enacted for, you know, future businesses and or residents that come to Pearland and make it real simple. I mean, I don't think that that's necessarily too costly to be able to do that.
Member Kamkar.
Really quick. And so we have our arborist, our urban forester person here today?
Jerry is not here tonight.
Did they make this recommendation? Have they seen this proposal? Has anybody reviewed?
Yes, sir. Staff has seen the one for one recommendation.
Do we have a memorandum? Is there support against indifference?
So for the one for one, I think staff would oppose that. And just, it's a pretty stark, it's a pretty hard line to start from. However, like Member Coza recommended or acknowledged, staff is open to looking at this, especially as our community approaches build out and the land bank we have does become more difficult lots that are maybe more floodplain prone or they are heavily wooded. And just to have language that is more conducive of acknowledging those barriers.
The person, Dr. Schuffler who's here, I don't need to call him to the mic, but has this item been addressed or remedied? Have we figured out a, a solution that addresses the concerns that were brought up by that individual?
Yes, sir. It's my understanding that they, he was able to plant on site in a way that would meet the code.
That issue then is off the table, at least for this individual.
Yes, sir. It's my understanding.
Were there any other individuals in previous years, last five years, 10 years, that have given you heartburn around this tree preservation ordinance and the standards therein?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir.
It's literally a one-off item.
Yes, sir. I mean, staff does take great pride in working with individuals to meet the code and make sure we can be as flexible as we can.
I, I agree with Member Coza. I think there's a time and a process. The staff is, is telling us and we say we rely on the staff, trust the staff, want the staff to lead us in the right direction. They would not support the proposed item as contemplated. I think there is a more robust discussion. I think it deserves more than one meeting with one proposal that we haven't even seen yet. I'm willing to look at it in the UDC and there are gonna be those troubled lots, but I just think I'd like to have an opinion of what are other cities doing? We're not the only city that has large residential lots that has big trees on it. I have no idea what those cities are doing. I'd like to know what Conroe's doing, Katie, other places feeling the same pressures that we have. The idea that we're gonna go change an ordinance that's been in place for 30 years because one person had an issue seems rather unreasonable. I think we need to be a little more thoughtful on how we deal with that. And I'm willing to be thoughtful. I think that UDC process will help us be thoughtful. And I think we should at least give more opinion.
Certainly not one person. It's many people. I mean, I've made many multiple phone calls around Pearland. And what you see here is the land bank is nothing more than those individuals that didn't have the space to be able to plant the number of trees that the, that the ordinance was requiring. So, you know, in, in certain, for example, if in the 30 inch example that I gave, you know, you have 90 inches of trees, that's 33 inch trees that you would have to plant on a small piece of property for one tree. That's unreasonable.
I, I don't disagree with this one example. I'm just saying the staff who we say we trust and want to support are telling us they don't want, they would not support your proposal. So I would just say.
I would say a proposal is nothing more than a starting point and that's why we're having a discussion. So that's it.
And there's no arborist or anybody that's, our urban forester isn't even here. I would at least like to have the opinion of the urban forester.
The department has here.
First off, this is a discussion item, there's no vote.
This is a discussion item. There's no voting tonight. So, so, yeah, so let's let's set that rhetoric aside for just a second. Uh, Member Carbone, you are going to your mic for just a second.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, Dr. Scheffler's maybe the most loudest and the persistent in talking about trees, but he's not the only one since I've been here.
Um, I would agree with that.
And, uh, so I think we do need to do something. I'm a fan of getting to it before the UDC rewrite. Um, if it's what is presented by Member Barry, I'm fine with that. If there's some some, uh, meet in the middle that makes sense, that staff would recommend and the the arborist, urban forester would would support. Um, so I'm I'm in favor of getting this done sooner rather than later because th- there's other out, others out there that have issues. They just, they're not developing, or they're just going somewhere else. And they're not gonna show up for however many hours you've been here tonight to to lean into it. Or they grumble and just move on and and grumble-grumble about whatever.
Yeah. So if we could maybe get a timeline on the on the planned UDC rewrite, so we know what kinda timeline we're talking at as well, like Martin or, uh, or Vance, um, what's what's our expectation on the rewrite? It was approved in the budget earlier tonight, so we we were ready to move forward, um, and then how long do we think that will take?
Yeah, so, I mean, a very efficient process would be 18 months, just by the time we identify a consultant and work through the process.
It might even be ambitious.
Mayor, um, I do, I do hear and I echo, um, Member Barry's, um, you know, concern, but at the same time, uh, even though he's a colleague who's to the right of me, who I actually enjoys sitting next to, um, you know, I do have a concern, right? Like, if businesses like Lonzo are willing to pay a check, why would you say no? Why would we not help other areas of Pearland get the trees? But at the same time, I also understand Dr. Scheffler's issue. You have one tree, now you wanna put three times, and eventually when they do grow, you might not even get insurance because those limbs are over your house. That's been an issue for me recently. And so I'm I'm a, if if you're asking me today, since we're having a discussion, I'm open to the idea. I certainly don't wanna wait 18 months, uh, but I think somewhere in the middle, like, uh, Member Carbone said, I think there is a happy medium for everybody. I think it it's a little bit aggressive, and I think we don't need to make it completely weak.
Mayor Potem.
And I and I agree that 18 months is probably a little too long. Um, so if there's something that we could come up with that, uh, that's doable for all sides, uh, you know, whether it's a stopgap measure just to fix in between, uh, I'd I'd be subject to, you know, entertain that.
Well, at the end of the day, even if it's a change in the UDC and the rewrite, it's gotta come to us as part of that. So there's nothing keeping us from from making the changes that we want to go into that UDC rewrite, um, and codifying it today or six months from now and 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 moving that along. It would just, that would ultimately go into the, uh, into the rewrite, so we we hold that card. Uh, so, I, yeah, I think there's, there's probably some middle ground in all of this. Uh, maybe not the one, one-for-one, but but as you said, that's a, that's a starting.
Anything. It's a starting point.
It's a starting point, and we we move it along. We we are gonna have, uh, some some difficult properties is what we have left. They're either gonna have a drainage issue, or they're gonna have the trees, or they're gonna have something that's gonna be a problem. Um, and and fundamentally, this is, it just goes to the fundamentals of of property rights. Um, who owns the trees? And so how we work through that and making sure that the 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 landowner, the person who actually owns those trees, you know, we, and and yes, we wanna protect canopy, yes, we wanna protect certain things, but who owns them? And and so working through that and how we get to a a a compromise point here where we still, uh, grow our canopy, not just protect it, but grow it. That's part of the issue is you're gonna replace this 30-inch tree with, uh, with 33-inch trees, and one day you'll have, you know, all these other trees. That's growing the canopy. And and while on one hand, I I think that's admirable, and I think that helps, but when does it become onerous? When does it become difficult? Um, and not everybody can write a half-million-dollar check. Um, and so, you know, that that makes it, that makes it difficult. So I think, I think we can find some some little ground. Um, you know, Trent, I don't know if this is something we can get our hands around and, you know, late October, November timeframe where we start having.
Sure, we'll we'll look at the calendar. You know, I think we we heard a consent or, uh, you know, at least a a majority that wanna look at it now versus later. Um, we can, you know, come back, um, in that timeframe with, you know, what some others, uh, we can evaluate what other cities are doing. Um, you know, try to find that that happy medium, um, look at some middle ground and some and some different ways that it's done, and maybe, maybe even how it's supplied to 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 different size of properties and things where you do have some constraints versus a a greenfield, uh, new project. Um, so we we can, we can kinda see what others are doing and and bring something back, uh, for further discussion in that timeframe. And I I know everyone hadn't spoken tonight, but.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so on that, yeah, I I actually am more in favor of keeping it what the, uh, UDC rewrite as a whole, because I I have seen in looking at at other cities and other codes, Mayor, where trees do have an a a very like, you know, uh, ro- excuse me, what's the word I'm looking for? Wide range of impacts, I guess, on on cities and developments. So they have mitigating effects that, you know, if you take from one property and and don't replace, I mean, that can have impacts on stormwater mitigation, it can have on, you know, heat, uh, what if heat island impacts and so forth. So I I think that trees really do, in in effect, belong to a community and have a broader impact and not just to the spot where they're sitting on at that particular time. Long range can have, uh, impacts, you know, even with the drought control, things like that. So I I think that looking at it from a broader, you know, impact on development as a whole, not just, you know, kinda parcel by parcel, but across the entire system, and how that's managed and how that affects, you know, even the aesthetics of a community, I think is an important thing to look at. So having that run alongside the UDC, not saying that we can't do something to to mitigate the effects on, you know, the individuals who are having to, uh, you know, write checks for the trees that they have, you know, sure, we can look at at more equitable ways to approach this, um, where the property owners are are taken into consideration, whatever their particular circumstance is, but, um, to maybe divorce it from the broader, uh, process, I think, is, uh, not, I think, in the best interest of the city. So I'd be more in favor of keeping it alongside the UDC rewrite.
Okay.
I, um, I, 18 months for the UDC rewrite does seem like a long time, but it has been in place for a while. I I would, I don't know. I I would like to talk about it some more before we change it. And I did, I did want to, um, hear from the arborist before we did anything also. Um, and and get his feelings on it. I, um, I also, uh, that's really where I'm at. I don't, I don't, I'm not against changing it, but I did want to, um, get a little more information first.
And Mayor Cole, if I may, um, so staff, you know, we take great pride in our flexibility as how we work with, uh, developers, and even the developer or the business owner here today, they had an approved set of plans that he felt uncomfortable meeting, and we met with them to make that happen on their site. And so he didn't pay towards the fee or didn't pay towards the tree trust fund, but ended up planning on site. And the information presented about the 10 properties that have paid towards the tree trust fund are just a show of 3,000 potential projects that could have paid into it. Only 10 have. And so, um, staff's recommendation is to do this in line with the, with the UDC rewrite. And I understand the 18 months, uh, I would encourage y'all to look at the numbers of that have paid into it. Um, and we do wanna get this addressed. We acknowledge it as an issue as we move forward. But just to formally state, staff would recommend doing this holistically with our UDC rewrite that just got budgeted tonight.
Sounds good. Just two two other comments. Um, my memory may be shot. I don't know that Matt's here. But I think part of the the EDC incentives back for Lonzo was to help mitigate this. So to use them that they happily stroked a check for 500K, I think it was 'cause the bulk of that came back from a different city pocket. Um, and I guess second, um, to follow up on Member Hernandez's point, uh, we do need to have further discussion, 'cause I'm I'm, I I see landowner rights as my land. My house is on there, if my trees are on there, if I wanna cut them down, I wanna cut them down. My my trees don't belong to the community as a whole. Um, but anyway, we can punt that till next time it comes back.
Yeah, I know that's gonna be a central theme to the overall discussion, which I I think is a valid, it's a valid discussion. It is. It's a very, very valid discussion. Last call for.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good, good discussion. Mayor Potem.
And, uh, Vance, just just kind of a closing comment. I know you worked with Dr. Scheffler. I know you've worked with others. Um, but in the community, it is a big concern. Um, so, uh, I guess through the negotiations, uh, until we figure out whatever it is we're gonna do, um, you know, keep that in mind and and make sure that, uh, i- it's mostly, I guess, the small business owners that look at it as a bigger, uh, issue. I know Tony said that, uh, EDC helped out Lonzo, but it is something that, um, you know, from my perspective, that you do need to make sure that they understand that it's not, hey, hey, here's where we're gonna be, uh, no matter what. So when they go through it, uh, 'cause it does throw up alarm real quick, real fast on that.
I think that's the approach we take with everyone, and and we'll continue to 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 be flexible where we can within the current code. All right, thank you.
Discussion. All right. Uh, moving to, uh, uh, Mayor Council issues number two, uh, Mayor Potem, would you place that on the table for possible action?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Consideration possible action regarding the repeal of Section 3.06, the Pearland Economic Development Corporation bylaws. So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Um, myself, I put this on here to have a discussion, uh, currently, thi- this was not a section that was in the original bylaws of the PDC. It's my understanding this was placed into the bylaws four or five years ago. I can't remember the exact date, somewhere probably in 18, maybe 19. Matt, do you remember the the year that that was placed?
It was February of 2017.
17, okay. I knew it was, um, somewhere in that in that timeframe. Um, and I I see this, uh, I see, number one, I see it as a as a penalty. Um, the state law doesn't require EDC board members to auto-resign if they announce to run for another office. Uh, I think this is the Jeff Berry rule. I think he, uh, served on the EDC and he and, uh, and 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 got on and without, I mean, honestly, I don't think you were looking to go and run, but the opportunity came about and you went and ran, and so we have members of council that that, uh, basically wanna put an auto-resign provision. We had a man last year run for, uh, position, uh, position seven that was on the EDC, was a very good functioning member, auto-resigned, and, um, obviously didn't win that election, but he's now off the EDC and would 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 have done a very good job staying on the EDC and, uh, finishing out that term or finishing out, uh, if elected. We've got a couple of members and, you know, elephant in the room, we've got two members that have announced, uh, they're running for, uh, a higher office, and you've got members of the EDC that are looking to potentially run, you know, for their positions. It would be an auto-resign in those situations. It would actually put that board in potential jeopardy for some quarrels over the next couple of months as we replace them. Um, and I just, I just think personally, it's a, uh, it's a penalty to people. I personally would love to see people on both planning and zoning and EDC. They're good training grounds for people to, uh, come to this, uh, to this dais. Um, and we should welcome them the opportunity to do so. So it would take, um, it takes a vote of the council, and then it takes a concurrence, uh, in changing the bylaws for the, um, EDC board, uh, board as well. Uh, they have a meeting this Thursday, and if this is approved by council, then they would make the same, uh, vote on Thursday. Um, and it would allow, uh, not just those two members, they would, they would stay in place at such time if they got elected to this body, then they would ob- I, they they would come off, but if they didn't, they had the opportunity to continue to serve until, you know, those positions are replaced. So, I offer that up as the opportunity to repeal, you know, moving forward. Uh, Member Coza, uh, well, I put it on there without a second as as the mayor's, you know, prerogative, but open it up for questions and comments.
I have no issues with the mayor. I think it's great. I think, uh, we got good people on there, and they wanna throw their hat into another ring, and it doesn't work out for them. We need to keep good people, and I've got no issues with this.
I I concur with that. I also think that, uh, it keeps that churn at a minimum. So that, uh, you know, in case of Antonio, uh, last, this past cycle, um, he would have still been on the EDC. He was a good member. Um, so with that being said, I'd I'd be in favor of this.
Member Cam Cor.
Do we have background on, in 2017, was the vote 7-0 to put this resign-to-run provision in there? Was it 4-3? I mean, I don't, I was not here at the time, so I I've I hate to put a scramble on the the staff, but I'm just curious. It was clearly something that was important to somebody. I guess I'm just, Matt, do you have more color on on this? You were here at the time, I believe, Brian.
It was, and it wasn't, yeah.
I don't recall the genesis of it, nor could I tell you what the vote was at that meeting. It would've been five at that time, though.
Yeah, it wouldn't be 7-0, 'cause we only have five council.
I I I think it's an interesting dynamic. Uh, it is a a training ground in some respects. I guess my concern is, similar to the tree ordinance and some other items, we we put it in place for a reason. Then when it becomes inconvenient, we we pull it back. I do think that there's an element to it, to a degree. Antonio Johnson was a good PDC member. From all the things I heard, he was. Um, but I I do think there's an element of churn isn't always bad to be negative, but it's like anything else, right? It forces us to do to do more research. But I, it was a 5-0 vote. If it wasn't a 3-2, one or the other, yeah. I'm loathe to think that we're smarter than the people in 2017. With this on there, maybe we are, maybe we aren't. Um, I'm a TBD on it. I guess I'd like to know more of why it got there in the first place. There's obviously a reason. But I don't have that color.
My understanding, we had members of council that didn't want you to go to that board and then and then go. I think it was a protection mode. They didn't want them coming up to their seats. So we're gonna put the auto-resign provision on you just to make you think twice before doing it. By two cents, I was not on council, but I watched it, and I watched that debate, uh, watched it around there. And and I think there were personally driven motives to place that on there. I disagreed with it then. I disagree with it now.
That's great color.
Any other questions, comments?
Is P&amp;Z the same way?
No.
I didn't think so.
P&amp;Z is not that way. If somebody wanted to run for a different office off the, uh, planning and zoning, they serve until they're either elected or not.
So is EDC the only board that is like this?
And state law doesn't require it of EDC. This is above and beyond state law, uh, for the economic development.
I just wanted to clarify if I may, Mayor. Um, the P&amp;Z does auto-resign. However, it is not automatic. I'm sorry, it is automatic. It it has the holdover provision that's also provided in the Texas Constitution. And that's where the cities' treatment to the bylaws or EDC differ from the P&amp;Z bylaws or the the state law. So, a- and P&amp;Z, if you announce and you have more than a year left, you are auto-resigned. However, you get to continue to serve as part of a holdover provision. The EDC bylaw is less forgiving in that instance, and it just says, you're out, and the story, you get replaced.
So for P&amp;Z, you could, if you lost, you would, you could still be on P&amp;Z?
No, ma'am. As soon as you, according to the city's bylaws, the EDC bylaws, once you announce, you can no longer serve uh, until, unless and until you were reappointed.
What about the other boards and commissions?
The only other one that triggers the auto-resignation is the P&amp;Z.
And EDC?
Well, yes, yes, ma'am. You said other ones.
And we operated, how old's the PDC now? 27 years?
28 years.
28 years, so.
Uh, following up on Member Cam Cor's question, it was. Uh, following up on Member Kamkar's question, it was a 5-0 vote.
Who is the person that, that out there? Do you recall, or is our agenda item say who brought that? Obviously, the mayor could do it by themselves or be an agenda item. Um, the other thing, and, and while, while they're coming with that is, and Member Coza and I are just sidebarring here on that, is maybe we add a holdback provision. The, the, there, but hey, there's six months or eight months to resolve that. I hear the continuity thing is real and especially as the P E D C is putting their shoulder in more burden. I think there's some legitimate comment there. Um, I do think insistency amongst the boards is, is helpful in terms of understanding what those responsibilities are and the, the rules. Maybe a holdback provision, you know, simplifies that in saying similar to what we're doing now and you elongate it. I mean, I'm just throwing things out there, but you said something, uh?
Yes, sir. So looking at the minutes, it's misleading as to who introduced it because, you know, even at that time, the mayor would say, would you be so kind as to introduce this item?
That's fine.
Um, but I, I think from institutional knowledge, if I understood it correctly, Member Perez at that time made that initial recommendation and it went through the normal process of starting at P E D C and then coming to the city of parentland.
Okay, I, and I, I know we're, it's evening. I would only offer maybe a holdback provision or a time maybe makes sense to more align, but.
And, and, and as a, as a compromise, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. It's just, like I said, for 20, you know, 22 years, wasn't an issue. And all of a sudden, it was an issue.
Mayor Cole, um, if my memory recalls, I was on EDC board and I think one of the reasons was, um, we wanted that provision because we had other candidates who were willing to come back, um, who had served previously. And we had a pool of applicants who were willing to come back. Uh, and I can't remember who we replaced Jeff with right now. Uh, maybe Mona or, or, Matt, do you remember who it was? Or was it Dan, I think Dan, uh, Dansby. Uh, so we had talented people who were already involved. And so it was like, if he was going to go off, you might as well go ahead and replace him. That was the only main reason I remember, so.
And I think the change here that in that instance, they would serve until replaced. As opposed to now where they're immediately off and then we, you know, potentially struggle to have enough to have a meeting.
Well, that's what, um, I wanted to ask Matt right now. Uh, your most, uh, minus Mona, who we just put back on. Uh, what are your two top tenured, uh, board members?
Jerry Coza would be our, uh, next most tenured and so he'd be on his second term.
Chad.
Which, yeah, Mona and Chad, I'm sorry. I thought outside those two.
Yeah, well, I mean, Chad, Chad's been there, but I mean that.
Chad's been on, Chad will be coming up on six years here.
Okay, yeah, so I mean.
And it would go to three years.
Yeah, so then it drops considerably from that.
Everybody's less than three.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Less than two, actually. Coza would be coming up on his third year this.
Mayor, uh, just, you know, being of this, uh, this whole thing is my fault apparently. Uh, uh, you know, it's certainly penalizing, right, for someone. And, I mean, just to, I didn't go into that position thinking that I was going to leave and run for office. That was not even in the cards at that time, believe it or not. But, um, for someone that wants to go and serve, you know, higher capacity or a different capacity within the city, I think it's pretty penalizing to say, you know, I know you want to serve and you want to continue to serve our community, but just to take them off of a board because they want to continue to serve or maybe serve in another capacity, doesn't mean that they don't necessarily serve and, as, as a good member of the board that they're currently on. And that's really all I want to say about that. I mean, I think that, you know, there doesn't necessarily need to be a whole lot of provisions and loopholes and so on and so forth. If they want to continue to serve, we have a hard enough time finding good people for these boards.
Which, which is why I said for 22 years, it wasn't an issue.
And that's, that's all I got to say about that, but.
Oh.
My two cents.
Any other questions or comments? We actually have a motion and a second on the table. Any other question or comment? To repeal 306, repeal it, to put it, it, it was placed in there, so we'd just be repealing that entire. That's the way we put it on there. Any other questions, comments? Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Mayor Protim Coza.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar.
No.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
All right, with that, we will, uh, move towards, uh, executive session under Texas Government Code, section 551.074, personnel matters regarding city boards and commissions. Council will retire into the executive session at 9:40.
position thinking that I was going to leave and run for office. That was not even in the cards at that time, believe it or not, but for someone that wants to go and serve in a higher capacity or a different capacity within the city, I think it's pretty penalizing to say, you know, I know you want to serve and you want to continue to serve our community, but just to take them off of a board because they want to continue to serve or maybe serve in another capacity doesn't mean that they don't necessarily serve as a good member of the board that they're currently on. And that's really all I want to say about that. I mean, I think that, you know, there doesn't necessarily need to be a whole lot of provisions and loopholes and so on and so forth. If they want to continue to serve, we have a hard enough time finding good people for these boards.
Which is why I said for twenty-two years, it wasn't an issue.
That's all I got to say about that, but.
Oh. Any other questions or comments? We actually have a motion of second on the table. Any other question or comment? To repeal three oh six, repeal it, to put it, it was placed in there, so we'd just be repealing that into, that's the way we put it on there. Any other questions, comments? Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Mayor Protem Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
All right. With that, we will move towards executive session under Texas Government Code, Section five five one point zero seven four, personnel matters regarding city boards and commissions. Council will retire into the executive session at nine forty. And we'll take no action. Moving to adjournment at ten oh three.